Anyone who's here, if you have any electronic devices, cell phones or laptops you're working on, please silence them at this time. Heather, would you please call the roll?
Phyllis McKee, here.
Tom Grinstead.
Here.
Garrett O'Brien.
Here.
Wally Taishi.
Here.
Lisa Anderson.
Jeff Brown.
Here.
Steve Croxus excused.
Thank you, Heather. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the 2016 Conference of Plan update and the changes that we've discussed over the past many, many, many weeks, and we'll work through most of them hopefully. But before we do that, we'll have a public comment period. There are no minutes to approve tonight, so we're just going to move straight to the public comment period, and then we can get into the work session. This is an opportunity for anyone who's in the audience to speak about anything other than tonight's topic. So, the two of you who are here, if you'd like to come up and speak about anything in particular, other than tonight's topic, please take this opportunity. Okay. So, we'll close the public comment period, and we can move right into the work session, which is nice, because we have a lot to talk about. We won't be taking public comment at this work session. We're just going to focus on, we've had a lot of work sessions with a lot of public comment, and so we're just going to focus on trying to work through all of our topics at this time. And, staff? Is there a presentation?
No presentation, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Good evening. Greg Ock, Planning Department. With me is Lisa Poole and Moshe Quinn, and we are here to help you guys work your way through the comments and suggestions that you've made, and we are open to however you would like to do it. We could go through the ones that we've highlighted, where we've agreed that a change is appropriate, get those out of the way first, or we could just start on page one and go through all ninety... Oh, yeah, maybe we should do that. Maybe we should talk about the utilities chapter first.
The new stuff that we're provided with?
Yeah, maybe we should do that first.
And just in case we have questions or anything like that related to it?
Okay, that sounds good. Let's do that.
Beyond that, I agree generally with what you suggested, though, unless planning commissioners have a different idea about how to go through it. I kind of envisioned us, you've incorporated all of the written comment that we provided earlier this week. Thank you for doing that in a short time period, so it seems like we could just go through it and hit it all. All right. Thank you, Moshe.
Thank you. So, yesterday, I delivered you a packet of the private utility section. That's going to be part of the capital facilities plan. Basically, we wanted to combine that together, so it's all in one chapter. So, GMA requires the city to work with private utility companies to assure that the residents in Bellingham are getting adequate service, as well as GMA allows the city to regulate land use, as well as siting requirements, so that they are less impactful to the neighborhood. So, what I have developed is, I developed a listing of what of the main utility providers. So, you have Puget Sound Energy, Cascade Natural Gas, and a variety of telecommunication services being provided to the city. And so, when drafting the goals for this section, we still kept it in the same light of meeting GMA, looking at the legacies and strategic commitments, as well as the five focus areas. And some of the main topics within those goals was to coordinate with private utility companies as they serve Bellingham, making sure that the city notifies them of potential street development, as well so they can co-locate utilities together, as well as if they're above lines, be able to put those underground. So, work with those companies on that, as well as assuring that as technology keeps on improving, that they basically offer the city the best technology available. We still would maintain a conditional use permit process for some of the facilities that could have impacts to the city, such as monopoles for wireless communications, as well as substations, as well as essential, we have a process for essential public facilities as well. And so, basically, that's what that covers. It has a map showing all the locations of some of the major facilities that are in there. As these are private entities, they have their own plans. It's just, we just need to assure that we work with these individuals as they plan to service Bellingham and its urban growth area. Also included with the packet was the capital improvement program, which is a six-year strategic plan to match improvements with available funding. Only the first two years of that plan are funded, the rest are anticipated. So, the capital facilities plan, or actually, the capital improvement plan is updated on a biennial cycle, basically two years, and that's ultimately approved by the city council. So, we have that developed in a packet for your review as well. With that, I can take any questions you may have on the private utility section.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Lisa?
I'm not sure if I missed it when I read through this, because I didn't have a tremendous amount of time given when we received this, but is there a section in here that talks about coordination of the utility companies notifying or working with the city? An example would be if Cascade Natural Gas sniffed a leak, and they're going to do some work to dig up something. Is there coordination with the city to ensure that neighbors are notified so that they have that option to evacuate that area, just in case there's an increased risk?
There is a policy that talks about for the future planning of service, as well as whenever they do maintenance or scheduled maintenance, to be able to evaluate that. I think there is, let me see, moment. Encourage local and neighborhood meetings and proposals for siding. There is on policy CF-88, encourage local public involvement, including neighborhood meetings and proposals for siding private facilities within Bellingham.
Number seventy-nine, too.
Yeah.
I hadn't noticed it before, but I just caught it when I was listening to you.
Encourage timely and effective notice to residents informing them of work on utility lines and substations.
Is that kind of the idea?
I see this more that if, being notified that, like when Puget Power is replacing a pole, and it might have a power interruption, but I'm just thinking of things that, especially with natural gas for safety, because I know in my neighborhood, they've dug up a couple of times because they've sniffed gas leaks, and I was surprised that some of the residents weren't aware of it.
That is something that we could probably expand to one of these policies here for that type of coordination.
I would appreciate a focus on coordination of information when there may be a safety risk.
And a lot of times with the safety risks, you know, something that might have to be immediate, like if there's a winter storm and lines go out, they have to immediately go out there and fix it. And the city monitors these types of agencies, especially when they're in the right-of-way through franchise agreements, and in there, it spells out a lot of the requirements, conditions that they have to meet when they're providing service through the public right-of-way on that. But we can add something in here to that effect.
If we end up, just to make sure we're all clear, if we end up making recommendations through new language, we'll be able to come back to those next week to make sure we get a chance to, like, formally incorporate them. Take a look at them.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Moshe, are those, in those franchise agreements, I mean, is, like, emergency maintenance work, like, to a gas main? Do they have notification protocols for people in the neighborhood?
I'm not, I haven't seen a lot of the franchise agreements. I just know that there are several with all, for them to be, to utilize a right-of-way, they're required to have a franchise agreement with the city. They're pretty lengthy, but I can come back next week and probably give you a sample of what information's in there.
It'd be interesting to see, because, I mean, having a policy there, if there's not anything in a formal agreement, I mean, a policy helps maybe direct that, but it'd be, it'd be nice to know.
Does anyone else have any questions, comments? Tom?
Moshe, is there a real reason to have this six-year preliminary capital improvement plan in the comp plan?
It's a requirement of the Growth Management Act. Growth Management Act to have.
Really? We're going to have to revise the growth management. I mean, geez, I can't, I just don't understand why they want to keep piling more and more of this stuff that gets outdated before supposedly our comprehensive plan gets outdated. I don't understand. I'm just a stupid Norwegian.
Do we, do we add, do we, like, update those little sections more often? That's a good point.
The actual capital improvement program, the CIP, is updated every two years as part of the budgeting process, and so, once that's done, our comp plan is amended to incorporate the new capital improvement program. It happens automatically every two years.
So, at the time that they adopt the new one, they also adopt the amendment to the ordinance to slip it into the folder effectively?
Correct. And that can't be done by reference? I mean, it just, I just don't understand why this stuff has to be in a comprehensive plan, which is, you know, the, kind of the overarching document. We're looking at stuff replacing fences. It just, I'm sorry, I'm stupid.
I have a question. This, is the transportation six-year plan incorporated into this? I see, like, public works improvements in here, in the CIP. Is it, like, the overarching document for the whole city, or can you explain how those correlate? I'm just kind of trying to understand how the different funding six-year plans correlate. Is that, is that in here?
Yes, there are transportation improvements in there, as well as, like, you'll also see park improvements as well, all listed together, and I think they all have to work together.
This is like the overriding document that includes all of those other plans?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. So, one change for us to consider next week. Thank you. All right, Greg, do you want to, you guys want to lead us through it, or do you want to, how do you want to handle this, in terms of moving us through?
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just, did we decide? We'll start on page one, we'll work with the yellow highlighted ones first. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah.
So, that seems good. Can I ask a question about process? There was a couple of comments about how this was going to get presented to the city council, there was some suggestions to incorporate planning commission recommendations into the body of the text that goes to council, so they have one document to look at with proposed changes and maybe a different font color. Is that feasible? Can we do that?
Yes, we will do that. We'll produce a red line version that shows all of the planning commission's recommended changes, some different color, underlined, strikeout, whatever works best. We'll do that.
I think that will be appreciated by everyone.
We'll do that.
Yeah, I know that's going to be more time for staff to do that, but I think we all appreciate it, and it'll, I think it'll provide better context for the planning commission's recommendations when they're seen in the plan. So, I think everybody appreciates that.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Hopefully, there won't be a lot.
Okay, so, it looks as if I'm going to be walking you through. So, we'll start with number one. Are we gonna, are we asking for a vote on each? How are we doing this? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
It's time.
Okay, so it's vote time.
So, LU ten, there was a, that underline language was good. I think this might have been one of my recommendations. I had a strikeout on inclusionary zoning, though, as one of those tools, so this isn't entirely complete, if that was taken from my comment, so I'd like to talk about that line item.
We have that one covered somewhere.
Yeah, I'm looking further down.
Yeah, a couple of these kind of go back and forth.
Can I make a comment about process? I think it's going to be really hard to go to number one and do a vote, because this is a good example that there's something further on in the plan that was just, I mean, in the comments, that was just, you know, came up last week, so I think we're going to end up going back and forth, and maybe undoing votes when we realize that's something that we just said is okay now, there's something further down. So, I don't know if it's possible if we look at just all of land use and then flip back and then make the decision, because I know there's a couple of items that several of us proposed revisions.
Yeah, there's a couple, there's a couple topics that are, that are, like, broader than one or two individual commissioners, and you're right, it would not make sense to vote on them, but we could, maybe we could isolate those and try and look at all of the comments that pertain to them.
Yeah, yeah.
In blocks, and then, for me, the question then becomes, do we skip those as we hit them, knowing what they are, and try and clean off all the little things first, and then come back to those bigger topics? Or do we stop when we hit one of those big topics and jump around and try and find, you know, find all the references and go through it all at that time? I'm just, I don't have a preference, I'm just kind of asking what you guys think about that.
I'd like to tick off the easy ones.
Yeah.
And then get those off to the side, and then go back to the ones where there's several revisions, and that way, we can...
There's only a few of those, I think, and you're right, and, you know, that way, we could take this list from ninety-seven to, like, ten really quickly. Does that, does that make sense? Kind of, how we, because I think there's just a few, there's obviously ADUs everybody commented on, and this LU ten, and I think...
Transportation.
Yeah, there was a couple of transportation ones as well, so, why don't we skip? Good start. Let's skip the first one.
So, we'll circle that, we'll come back to it.
Yeah, just circle the ones that you find that are related to...
So, we'll go on number two.
Which is also something that...
Is there multiple references to LU twenty-three?
I think you spoke to this a couple of times, Garrett, but I think they were all kind of from...
I like the way this is written, the revision. I think it, yeah, Phyllis brought this up, actually, when the land use chapter was first presented, was just trying to, trying to address the need for creativity and flexibility and design standards and zoning ordinances, so that we don't just get more of the same, and people feel like they can do projects, you know, differently. I know Tom's talked about that, too, from being an architect and trying, being forced to feel prescriptive about having to design things a certain way, because they know it'll get approved and accepted, so I like the way that's written.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think what, if we just set the end goal, and then the ways of getting there can be left to creative design is important, and just make sure we capture that essence would be great.
And the way, this is slightly different than what you had proposed, but I agree that, I think staff actually did a, no knock, but they, like, made it better, and it retains that reference to compatibility of character, which I think is a really important part of that concept.
Yeah, compatibility.
But still, you know, but still acknowledging the flexibility and creativity, so, I'll look at two.
Well, I like the word compatible in there, as opposed to same as or similar to, but compatible with, seems to be a much broader, more desirable word in that context.
Yeah.
The only difference that I see between this version and Garrett's is the, really, the use of periodically at the beginning, where he said we should do it periodically, and we could certainly add that if the commission chooses.
I like the way it's written. I think it is good.
Is there any other comments on this topic? So, do you think it's appropriate for us to, to, like, actually make motions?
No, I think you can give us head nods at this point.
At this point? Okay. So, I think there's consensus, is there consensus amongst the language is appropriate? Okay, so, yes.
We're yes there. Just as we move forward through this document, if we get in a situation where we don't have all head nods, and we have some head shakes, we should probably do some sort of vote?
Yes. If it's unclear if there's consensus, we'll do, like, a straw vote, or like, yays, or hands, or something.
We're on three?
Yeah.
This is more about orientation on the list.
You, staff, you moved, this is just, I think this was a request I'd made early on when we reviewed the land use chapter, that we move the affordable housing reference higher up, because it was at, like, the very bottom, and we had chosen affordable housing as a key concept for this update, and so I just thought it would be good.
Actually, if you go to number thirteen, there was another comment on that, I believe Lisa had asked, so that would be the most updated version that you'll want to consider.
Item thirteen?
We, yeah, we moved housing, what, affordable housing, housing up, and then we added the industrial and commercial zoning with an emphasis on manufacturing jobs.
Thank you, that was the second change that you made after a comment that Lisa made.
So...
We should underline that.
That's the new one.
So, so item three's supplanted by thirteen?
Yeah.
Correct. Yep.
And effectively, the total recommended change, if you combine, I think, my comment and Lisa's comment, would be to move the affordable housing bullet up higher, and then add a new bullet referencing industrial and commercial zoning. That's accurate.
So, should we go to thirteen then and review that?
Yeah, just take a look at that. Lisa, do you want to speak to that comment at all, briefly?
I was just thinking that eventually, when we do open up the UGA, that one of the considerations should be, since we have several areas, when we go to make a decision on which one we may be opening up, one of the considerations should be whether or not it's going to be able to provide a job base with manufacturing or industrial land versus just solely housing. So, I mean, at that time, it should be one of the considerations based on the need, and that may be an overarching need, and it may not, but it should be a point of consideration when we're making that decision, where we're going to open up and when.
Jeff?
I support the concept, actually, on both of them, on that entire thing. The only comment I'd make is, does it make sense to state a preference for manufacturing jobs specifically, and would that actually be a disadvantage if it turned out that the economy base changed, and there were a lot of jobs available, but we somehow earmarked this area as manufacturing, when in fact, you know, all of a sudden, Amazon moves to town and hires four thousand people? I don't know. It seems like that's boxing it, and maybe we don't want to box it, we just want to make sure there's land supply for economic development and jobs, industrial and commercial.
And I tend to put a little bit more weight on the industrial jobs over the commercial because of the rate of pay. I just didn't want to see something open up solely so that it could be a strip mall versus being able to pay livable wage jobs, and that's why I focused on industrial.
Industrial's very important. What if we made it with an emphasis on something like living wage jobs, or something that referenced, like, the value of, because I agree that, you know, we don't need to be looking for land for more minimum wage jobs or retail.
Or just creation of jobs, you know, with an emphasis on...
Well, that doesn't speak necessarily to the, you know, the idea of a job that produces a strong wage.
I agree with that.
Walmart creates a lot of jobs, but they don't create living wage jobs, for example.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
Not to knock Walmart, but is that, is that okay?
Do you have a suggestion for wording that would meet our goal?
Well, I mean, it's sort of two different things. I think you either say, you know, manufacturing jobs, which is what you had originally proposed, or you say living wage jobs. I mean, if you're talking about wages, then you'd go that route. If you're talking about types of jobs, then you'd want to go that route.
I think...
I mean, you could put both in there, it just makes it a longer...
Well, I think, I think, I think you could substitute, you know, living wage, you know, a manufacturing job is commonly, you know, accepted as, you know, being, being a good job, you know, a living wage job, for the most part, so, I mean...
It's a little broader.
It's a little broader, because Jeff brings up a good point, I mean, you don't want to, you know, it could be interpreted as giving only a preference to manufacturing, where there's a lot of quality jobs that we'd love to have, you know, in employment lands that could be professional or other.
I think it's really, it's really important to add, because, for another reason, just in general, I'm very supportive of this addition, because when we look at annexations, we look at the cost, and these residential ones kill us, and the ones that have commercial industrial lands tend to pencil better. So, it clearly, on that basis alone, should be a consideration we include when we're looking at our, you know, looking at this policy. Kind of informally, would you accept an amendment to say on living wage jobs? Do you think that tackles your intent?
I think, I think that's a good change. There's a lot of uses within the industrial zone that can be applied, so it's not necessarily only manufacturing, and I just think you got to be careful about, you know, limiting in language and scope what can be done. The idea is, and from a financial standpoint, all these, absolutely right, you know, when you're looking at an annexation proposal, if they have employment lands, industrial or commercial employment lands, it, the, the cost of that annexation is drastically, you know, reduced, and so, in that, this supports that.
Is there any other comment on this one? Phyllis?
No, other than just, I like the change.
Okay.
I like opening that up, because we never know what's going to be happening.
So, if we change that, that, remove manufacturing, replace with living wage, kind of head nod around that that's an appropriate change to the ultimate policy, so that would be the number thirteen one that adds, of course, Lisa's suggestion. So, we got two.
We're back and forth.
Yeah, and then we got to jump back.
So, I think we're then moving, if we're moving on to the next yellow highlighted number, which those are the ones where there were recommended changes, then that would be number eleven.
My fellow commissioners, if we end up getting confused around a topic, or moving too quickly for someone, because, you know, there's a lot to think about, please just interrupt. I'm okay with that, and just let us know if you feel like we need to back up, or we didn't finish something appropriately. Jeff?
My only process question is, so if we skip to only the highlighted ones, we are by default dismissing the ones where somebody made a comment, but staff didn't agree and staff didn't do a change. Is that what we want? Or do you want to touch on each things we go through, and at least, you know, if somebody says, hey, look, you know, this is really important to me, and you just got smushed?
Well, I think we're planning on coming back and around to those. We just wanted to start with the, the yellow ones.
Should we do that? You guys want to come back to them? Yeah? I just wanted to point that out, that by default, you're...
They're not, they're not gone.
No, I completely agree. We, not, staff didn't agree on everything, so, you know, if you have a comment that you feel like needs more discussion, and it wasn't something that they changed, then yeah, we definitely need to come back to it, but maybe Lisa's got the right approach, and we get through the main ones. That takes us to number eleven on page five. Right, Lisa? Is that right?
Number eleven, yes. That would be policy LU eleven. So, well, well, the question, sorry, was actually on LU eleven, but we are addressing, I believe it was Lisa's comment, by revising policy LU thirty-eight. Right now, it says retain neighborhood schools in developed areas and locate new schools consistent with the city's commitment to encourage infill development and facilitate compact growth, and so what we're doing is just adding walkability.
Are we speaking of elementary schools here primarily, or maybe that...
Schools, any, any schools.
Like high schools?
Yeah, we want them all to be walkable, bikeable, by kids to get to school. Yeah.
Pardon me. Jeff, sorry.
I do just, I have one comment on that, and that is that the school district has different objectives, in that, you know, when they look at elementary, I don't know the exact numbers, I think it's a minimum ten acres. When they look at high schools, it's something like a minimum thirty acre. They have specific criteria for what they want, and they have made a policy choice that it's better to bus to a facility that's larger than walk to a facility that's smaller. So, for the planning commission, you know, this is our plan we're working on, but I should point out that the school district's not actually at the table here, and they have a different objective, and that's what they do, so...
Yeah.
Whatever that means.
We're aware of that. I mean, however, I think as a city policy, it's a good policy to have in there, and we also, I mean, we get grants from various sources for safe routes to schools and things like that, so it's important for us, from a transportation perspective and other quality of life perspectives, I think, to have this in our plan, to try to hopefully encourage the school district to maybe go this route as well, so...
We don't necessarily have to agree with them, is what you're saying.
Being someone who's spent several years in the, in the public schools, I would think that, I understand the neighborhood feeling, but I think elementary would be the target kind of school, but not, I mean, we have, what, three high schools? Or is it four now in Bellingham? And, you know, they're certainly not going to be walkable. I mean, the people who go to those schools are certainly not walking, but it's a, it's a nice goal for, for the neighborhood elementary school. And I don't know why we should start out with being contradictory to the school district, because we're not going to be building high schools in walking distance like elementary schools would be.
I would look to the other folks on the commission to see what their thoughts are, but I mean, for instance, the middle school that's just right over here, that's very walkable, and that's a neighborhood school, it's not an elementary school, so I wouldn't limit it to just elementary.
Lisa?
I would like something in there that... I would like something in there that when the school district is looking to expand, that they know the city's preference, that where they look to purchase property to build a school is going to be in an area where there is going to be the development of housing and other infrastructure, where hopefully kids can walk to school regardless of if it's elementary, middle school, or high school, especially as we start looking at building out more towards the north end of Bellingham. Um, they could decide, well, this out on the very edge might be a little bit more affordable, but we're going to have to bus all of our kids to get there. So, if they have an option between a couple of land areas to purchase or to develop, that hopefully that the city signals that we would like to make sure that our schools are walkable if that is a preference of the city.
I think, I think this, I think as written, the policy does that, you know?
With the?
Yeah, retain neighborhood schools and locate new schools consistent with.
As, as amended or as proposed amended?
As, 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 as proposed in eleven, as amended. I, I mean, I think it's a good change. It, it's a, you know, I think Phyllis is absolutely right. Like, you know, the, the amount of land that you need for a high school is not feasible for everybody to probably walk to, but, you know, gosh, it's a shame when you see, you know, schools like, you know, Larrabee, you know, closing down right in the middle of a, a neighborhood where there's, you know, tons of infill potential, and, you know, they, they give character to neighborhoods. It's safer for kids to walk, and, uh, I absolutely would support, you know, the language as written, and there's going to be practical considerations. They're going to make it feasible in every respect, but I like it.
Well, I mean, Jeff's right. The school district kind of does, to a certain degree, what they want to do, and like, the city only has so much control over that, and you see things like Wade King, which was, you know, they, the, that drew in s- school district planning and the city kind of county shifting, and ultimately was a bad, probably like a bad investment because it doesn't look like we're going to move toward bringing U Street in, whether you think that's right or wrong. And, um, so, I, I guess, I, I'm supportive too, just because on a baseline level, the more we can say, this is what you should be doing, the harder it's going to be for the school district to go do things that aren't consider, you know? They can still choose, but it's harder for them.
I just don't want another Wade King out on the north side where something is isolated and all the housing is located someplace else.
Or, or the point Garrett made, which is, you know, the closing of a small school, you know, um, I know that's probably more expensive, and the school district's probably looking at the bottom line, but as a community, we can encourage them to make a good, you know, community-based decision.
And I think in recent years, they've gone along with that. They've come to that realization, and the last bond issue was for rebuilding existing schools, not building new ones out on the edge of town.
They've paid more attention to, to you guys maybe in the, the mistakes of the past.
So, are we good with this policy as revised?
Is everyone okay with this policy? Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, and then number thirteen, we just covered when we talked about number three, so we can move on to the housing chapter. Number fifteen would be the first one there. And that is the one about ADUs.
This, this one's probably going to be one that's going to need more discussion.
I think there was four or five proposals for language, so.
Okay. Number seventeen is regarding policy H twenty, and there was a request to make specific reference to, to underserved populations, and then you see the proposed modification, which is to provide information to residents, including underserved populations, on affordable housing opportunities and first-time homeownership programs.
Yeah, I like that.
That was a suggestion I made, uh, because I really pre-, I can't remember what chapter it was in, but there was another reference to, you know, focusing outreach. It was in the land use, and I just felt like it was a good addition. Any discussion on that? Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, number eighteen is regarding policy H twenty-two, which is to monitor housing demand relative to housing types. So, we did modify that policy to say, monitor the city's affordable housing market, including housing demand by housing type, and report on the effectiveness of the city's affordable housing policies.
I think that was another one of my comments.
Yeah.
Just, I'm sure that the data's available, so, you know, as we're looking at our data, I think it's a good idea to see what each... Actually, thinking back, I think this related to a thought I had that, um, we should be looking at what people want too, and, and the types of people who are moving to our community, what they're looking for. Um, and so, looking at, you know, demand, um, for housing types will help us kind of make better informed decisions. You know, the idea being that if, if we find that all the people who want to get, come here and get good manufacturing jobs like to live in a two-bedroom condo, you know, downtown, then we know who we, you know, who we should be targeting maybe with our housing forms.
Uh, I like, I like it. I think it's important too to kind of, I, I like the parenthetical reference to affordable, just to say, stating that it's across all income levels. So, you know, it's so easy when you're thinking about affordable housing to think about one, you know, socioeconomic group. I, I think this is composite affordable housing policies, which has been a emphasis in our plan and trying to, you know, look at the whole and not just, you know, low income. Now, houses should be affordable for, for all, for all peo-, all income levels, so.
And we do have a number of other policies in the chapter that speak specifically to affordable housing, the defined version. So, I, I agree. This is, I'm thinking of this in a little bit different context. Is the idea that you would have that subtext in there so it's clear to people kind of, or is that just for our benefit?
Uh, we can add it in. I just noticed that I hadn't underlined it, but we, we can add that in.
Do you think that, and that helps to kind of clarify the context of, of what?
It sounds like you all think it would be helpful, so.
I think it's a good idea. Otherwise, affordable oftentimes refers to lower end. And this would then suggest at all levels.
Any other comment on this one? Jeff?
Well, the only question I have gets back to semantics, uh, and that is that we've talked about what we really mean when we're talking lowercase affordable housing, whether it's workforce housing or moderate income housing. Is there a, a term that gets away from using uppercase affordable housing and lowercase affordable housing that would be consistent through the comp plan? What, the workforce housing, for example?
Well, if you look on, on page four of the housing chapter, in the housing affordability section, we actually define both types. Um, housing affordability is the standard term used by lending institutions and others that state no more than thirty percent of a household's gross monthly income goes toward housing expenses. But then, affordable housing is housing that's affordable to households earning eighty percent or less of the median income. So, that, that is sort of the standard, is to say, housing affordability is sort of the general term we use to talk about what's affordable to all income levels, but affordable housing would be the standard HUD definition.
So, my question remains though, because that's still, I don't know. It, you know, if it doesn't matter to anybody else, it doesn't matter to me. But, but I think that's a subtlety that might escape many people reading the comp plan as they're buried in a chapter. It's like, well, is it housing affordability or affordable housing? And what does that mean? But, I don't know. I'll drop it.
Well.
I, I would ask, who reads the comp plan for fun?
Everybody.
There, there is a box on page six that defines workforce housing, but I, I understand what you're talking about, Jeff, because you, we get so many of these terms, like, which one are we actually talking about? It can get really confusing. But, then, then you look at, like, if we replaced all those with workforce housing, would that be, you know, broad enough or, I don't know.
Well, the thing that I'm worried about is, you know, you bring up housing affordability, and, and people's initial response might be, oh, yeah, we, I voted for that a couple years ago, and that problem's solved. And that's not what we're talking about at all. So, I mean, that's, to me, it's semantics, that's all.
Gotcha.
Yeah, yeah. I, I see that, because I could read that as monitor the city, the affordability of the city's housing market, you know, and similar to, to, I guess that's how I interpreted this.
Do you think that that clarification at the end, Jeff, kind of helps to, at least, my thoughts when I, when I made a comment on this was more like, we should be looking at the whole, the whole market and, and affordability for all segments. Um, and, and so, maybe that needs to be in there, Lisa, at the bottom, so it's clear. Because, at least for what I was trying to comp, the message I was trying to accomplish was that we should be looking at everything and all, all the housing types and, and the whole picture. It probably doesn't fix it on the next page, but at least.
And I think when you look through the different sections of the chapter and the different policies, you will see that there's a distinction in a lot of cases. I mean, we call out low-income housing in several policies, and that's when you know it's specific to low income. I think for the rest of them, it's safe to say that we're talking about the broader affordability.
Does everybody feel okay with that language? Do you have a comment?
I'll probably mangle this, but I'm just wondering if there's a way to get rid of the parentheses by rewriting the intro of that sentence. Something like, monitor the city's housing market to include affordability options across all income levels, including housing demand by type. Not that that's exactly how I'd word it, but I'm just wondering if we could just incorporate that bracket to, um, become part of that sentence, to help define what we're monitoring, if that makes sense. If it's going to cause confusion about the word affordability, we can move it around a little bit.
Well, I mean, we could also say, I mean, where it says including housing demand by housing type, you could say across all income levels. Add that after housing type, and then we don't have to have the parentheses since we've already defined affordable housing and housing affordability in the chapter.
And it's all these comment, I, I mean, I, to me, I think that makes sense, because I, I think you want to keep at the end that you're reporting on the effectiveness of the affordable housing policies, because I think the idea, correct if I'm wrong, is like, looking at the policies and how they are affecting the market.
Yeah.
That, and the availability of housing forms.
For me, that suggestion, I think, works, and, and it would allow you to eliminate that whole parenth- piece. If that's, Lisa, does that sound like an appropriate solution?
Yeah, and it eliminates the concern about the confusion of affordability being just the lower income.
Yeah, and it solves both the problems.
Okay.
And then, okay, I'm okay with that. Is everybody else okay with that? Thank you, Lisa.
Let's see here. We're moving on to page nine of the tracker, which is comment number twenty-one. Uh, this would be a new policy that, um, states, reevaluate commercial zoning regulations that require development of commercial use with residential development. Consider adding criteria that would allow residential uses to develop independently in circum-, certain circumstances.
And I rewrote that on comment sixty-three after that was initial run.
I remember that. Should we, should we look at that now, Jeff?
I would think so. It's not controversial.
No.
I mean, you can just kind of decide if it, if it hits the, uh, main points. And what I was trying to do, um, sixty-three, so I was trying to basically allow some flexibility so that that ground floor requirement could shift back and forth. So, if you didn't have commercial demand, but you did have residential demand, you could use them for residential units under certain parameters, either temporarily or permanently. You know, there would be a lot of flexibility there, but it's just specifically dealing with that issue. Um, so, I don't know if, and I was trying to clarify it, so it was a little more specific.
Pardon me.
Well, I, I mean, I like the idea. I, I'm just wondering from an implementation, I mean, would that be something that, you know, would be through like a conditional use permit or just waiving the requirement? I mean, from an administrative standpoint, how would, how would the city administer something like that?
In the inf-, I think in the infill toolkit.
I can't say right now.
Yeah, I, I was, I was told by somebody that the Peabody project had flex spaces in them. So, it, that's been implemented, our, you know, the Peabody infill toolkit project. Someone told me that the EDUs that are on the street front are spaces that someone could occupy as a residential space or could open like a small business in that space. They're basically studios.
Yes, that's true.
So, it seems like implementation, I, I, I underst-, I like where you're going because the fear with saying you can build apartments to grade is that thirty years from now, the commercial market has like rebounded downtown, and there's this high demand for like this urban environment where, you know, all the streets have commercial activity, and then we've put all these houses down there, and we don't, we lost that. So, what you've proposed protects that because you have a flex space, basically, right?
Well, I'm trying not to, not to, you know, typically right now, when you permit something, there's an assumption that you're permitting one use for the life of the building. I'm trying to get away from that. So, for example, right now, if the choice is between a vacant first floor and having a filled first floor, I'd like to see it filled. And if in thirty years, commercial's hot, residential is more saturated, it should be able to shift back to commercial. So, the whole point is not to have a vacant first floor and to have, you know, improve the economics and have. And I would almost see it as not something that happens in permitting initially. It's something where essentially a property owner would be able to petition, you know, if they can document the market's not filling, you know, they've had it on the market, they've had the space on the market for a while, they can't do anything, they could get a use for that, something like that. I don't know. I'm not, uh, expert in that area, but it was trying to get rid of empty first floors.
Well, I just, I'm sorry. I just read it. I'm, I'm reading through it, and I, I'm just wondering if the language could be, you know, to reevaluate commercial zoning, to allow mixed-use developments, you know, flexibility, you know, and then kind of carry on with what you were saying.
Well, I was just going along with what Jeff was saying too, is that, but I, I don't like to see empty first floors. That can be a real economic drain on things. But, um, and I wouldn't want to have them have to advertise it for a certain period of time to prove that it wasn't rentable, uh, because, you know, whatever concessions they'd have to make to get somebody in there, then it becomes a subjective kind of debatable thing. But I would just like to see giving, you know, people are going to respond to the economic motivation on, on things like that. We're not, if, you know, it can be one way or the other. They could design it in such a way that it could be commercial or it could be residential, and then as, as the times change, then they could shift to the other, the other use. And who knows if that might go back and forth over time. I would, I just would want to make sure we have language that would allow that without a lot of having to prove that they haven't been able to rent it.
I think the one that we originally proposed, I mean, is a little broader and, and I mean, would help us figure out what it would look like later on as opposed to, to figuring that out now in the policy, getting too specific. I mean, I, I think the, the number twenty-one, it allows us to, to reevaluate it and look at it and discuss it and, and see what changes need to be made. But it's, it's up to you if you want to go with.
Well, how do you, how do you?
Twenty-one or sixty-three.
How do you distinguish that it's not, you know, si-, you know, multifamily? Like, I, I mean, how, I, I think that's what's missing there is that, you know, not requiring commercial space fixes that immediate problem, but how, how do you convey that it should be mixed use and have flexibility? That it could go commercial, it could go residential, and it could change. And then there's fire code issues too with that. I mean, commercial spaces are regulated differently than, than residential, and the separations are, are different.
I think we, yeah, I mean, you can fi-, we can figure out the details when we go to amending the, the code and actually looking at the commercial zoning code. What you want to do here is state your policy objective, whatever it is.
Yeah. Well, Greg, that's actually what I have a comment on related to this, is I think these two policies actually don't address the exact same thing. The city proposal addresses situations where you have zoning that says your commercial building mu-, or your residential building must have a commercial component in it. We have zoning in the city that says, if you want to build an apartment, you have to put commercial on, on grade. And this, that city policy would say, you don't have to do that anymore. You could have, you could choose to have a mixed-use building, or you could just do a residential-only building, the zoning permitted uses. Jeff's policy is saying, let's provide flex space, maybe on the ground floor. You didn't put that in there, but, you know, flex space is a totally different concept. That's saying, let's allow this building to just say the ground floor can be either commercial or residential at their discretion. And those are kind of different concepts. I personally, personally, I support, they're both problems, but Jeff's is a broader, I, I think it's broader because it addresses the residential-only component, because you could just choose to make the ground floor residential, but it also addresses the ability to flip back and forth, which provides even more flexibility to market demand. So, I don't want to disagree, but I actually think, Jeff, that what you're proposing is broader. I would recommend eliminating if the market demand for commercial use is limited, because I don't like the idea of having to prove it down the road to some arbitrary body. I think you should design a, if I design a project, I want to say, these spaces are flex spaces, and in the future, we can choose as long as we meet building and fire codes and park for the worst-case scenario or something. And so, I, and that's maybe two in the weeds, like, we can work that out later, but.
Well, I'm fine. I didn't, I'm not going to take particular ownership on it being that, that way. I just saw that, that was the issue to me, was, you know, getting away from trying to lock in. lock in a building at the point it's built, so that's what it's going to be. That was its permitted use. You can't change it, and then you have empty, empty first floors.
Yeah.
So that's what I was trying to get at, was that flex concept, without driving things so that somebody puts in, all of a sudden, I can imagine the city's concern, is all of a sudden, you have people putting in, you know, three or four ground-floor residential four-story buildings in a row, and you have a dead space on the sidewalk. And so, I was just trying to get flexibility there, within some parameters, not do anything else.
Would it maybe make sense, is flex space, I mean, we've heard that term, you use that term, is that something from a planning standpoint, that's a recognized use? I mean, flex space? Okay. I mean, maybe the language is just say, you know, recommend, you know, reevaluate commercial zoning to allow flex space on main floor of, you know, commercial developments, and just keep it broad like that. I mean, I think we're all talking about the main floor, and if it's flex-based, and that's an accepted, you know, term, and planners understand what that is, and people, you know, like you said, the regulations that order, it's all to get drafted to support all fire codes and everything else.
I want to be careful that we're not opening up a Pandora box of unintended outcomes, because I think of like, the Samish Way Urban Village, and if a developer comes along and reads something like this, and really, their goal is that they want all housing, because they don't want to work in the housing and commercial aspect of a building. I just don't want something written in here that is going to give them the choice from the beginning plan, that it's going to be ground-floor residential. I do like the idea that it's designed for commercial, it meets the regulations for commercial, but it has that ability that if it's not rentable, because we don't want something left empty for a long time, that they have the ability to convert it to flex space, but that it has to be an additional process or request to have that done, so that they're just not, from the building design at the beginning, planning ground-floor apartments, especially in a situation where you could go down a block or two, and that's what you have, because that defeats what the urban village design with the corridor would want to look like. So, hearing multiple different ideas, I'm not sure how that wording would be crafted, but my goal would be is that, you know, we kind of adhere to the thought of what an urban village, or, you know, a main commercial corridor with the housing up above, but that flexibility that they can come forward and make that change, but then change it back later if the market changes. Does that make sense? I mean, I'm very cautious about some of the wording as this is morphing along, that my, what I'm seeing is the ability to just, residential from the onset, and I want to avoid that.
Yeah.
Well, that's what, I mean, that's actually what our suggested number 21 was doing. I mean, for instance...
In certain circumstances.
Well, yeah, for instance, Ali had a project come through a couple of years ago on Samish, not at the urban village, but it was going, we were requiring mixed-use with commercial on the bottom and residential on the top, and we looked sort of in the context of that area, and said, "You know, it's not really making sense. It's not working, those spaces aren't filling up." So we gave him the flexibility and a rezone to make that all residential, because that made sense for that site. So that's really what this policy is talking about, and I think for policy number 63, the flex space, I mean, we kind of need to go back and talk with some of our permit folks, and folks that do implementation, and kind of run this by them a little more.
I think that's a good idea. You know, we could bring this back at our next meeting, and just have a, you know, there's going to be a couple of these that we're probably going to not want to draft here on the fly, and if you guys could propose language, and I think the intent, I think there's an agreement on the intent.
Yeah. And Lisa, to speak to your comment, there's definitely areas where we don't want, we want to force commercial, because it's like, in the urban village cores, you know, because we, ultimately, if we get enough residential, it's going to, the critical mass will be there, or like, in the downtown, in Fairhaven, in the Fairhaven Plan, we wrote in, "These certain streets have to have commercial ground floor," and I think that is a concept that you brought up that has to be supported, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's probably, if we leave that term in certain circumstances in here, then we leave that decision to the individual, like, when we do an urban village plan, we say, "These streets near the village have to be," and it goes, that level of detail goes into the specific plan, because it is, I mean, it's a valid concern. You don't want, like, Samish Way not to have commercial on it, ultimately, or guide Meridian through the fountain. So, just a thought. But, Phyllis?
Yeah, I just would want to make sure that we weren't forcing somebody to go through, having to develop it a certain way, and then come back and rechange it, when they know, like, let's say they needed to go to residential because of the market at the moment, and whatever the other situations may be. And I just want to make sure that they wouldn't have to make it commercial, then come back and make it residential, that they could do that from the beginning. And I think maybe that's where Lisa and I might differ from one another. They would plan that from the beginning, but with the idea that 10 or 15 years from now, I may want to then take that same space and make it a commercial entity, because the market has so changed by then. Meanwhile, though, I have an occupied building during the course of these changes over time, and that's what I'm looking for, not that they'd have to create one illusion while they're really trying to go through the back door to be something, yeah, okay.
No, a lot of these zoning districts allow lots of different uses, and, I mean, you can build, you can, you know, install, or build, or remake a building into whatever's allowed in that zoning district, like the project on Samish, that's all residential moving forward, can come back and be any of the uses on the list, but that's allowed, so.
Look who you did, Jeff. I'm just kidding.
I just had one follow-up comment on the whole flex issue, is, I think there's a, there is a concept in planning of looking at the static uses for buildings over the building lifetime. And one of the situations I've encountered is, in some of the neighborhoods where the zoning has changed over the time, there's some houses that have been used for commercial uses, and my understanding, having owned one, was that, once somebody elected to move a single-family house, which retained its form and function, into a business, you couldn't bring it back to a house, once the commercial, the use had flipped. It was actually now designated as a commercial. This was in Sunnyland, and you weren't allowed to bring it back and have it as a single-family house. So, that's an example. That's what I was told by one of your planners. So, it's, I don't know the details, but I'm just pointing out that over the lifecycle of a building, there is a certain advantage to having a flexibility to respond to the market, because the alternative is, it stays vacant, or stays unused, or all of a sudden, you have a structure that you can't fill, and be part of the economy, and be part of the housing stock. So I just, I really like to encourage some flexibility without undermining zoning, but allowing to respond to uses over the lifespan of a building, without locking everything in at the date you permit it.
Sorry, I think this is broad enough that we should come back to it, and it sounds like a couple of people might have ideas about how to tweak that language, and maybe, is that okay, say, if people have ideas about what they might think is better, you propose them at the next meeting or during the week, and we can kind of go through and pick a final? I think we're all in agreement on a broader concept, and it's kind of like where we settle on it. So, if that's okay.
Number 24 is the next item, and that's on page 10 of the tracker. So that's policy H6, which we modified to remove height limits. The intent with something like this is not to change the height limits, so it would say, "Consider modifying codes to maximize economical wood frame construction." That's really what we're getting at with that.
Yeah, I think, to me, that's clear.
Does everybody, oh, go ahead, Phyllis, sorry.
I was going to say, can you refresh my memory about why we're promoting the wood frame construction above, say, steel frame construction? I mean, it seems like we're very openly doing that.
Someone who builds might be able to discuss this a little better, yeah.
Yeah, it costs a lot more.
My commercial building is steel frame construction, and that was a decision made by the architect and the contractor, and I was just kind of curious as to why they may have gone that way, and we're now saying that wood frame construction, is that because we live in a area?
I think some people don't realize that they can build at a taller height limit with wood, so, and some codes may not allow it, so we need to go through a process to work with our building folks, to make sure, one, it's allowed, and, two, that folks know about it, and we get the word out, to save people money.
Kind of a building code thing.
It's a building code issue, yeah.
So, for example, I think different jurisdictions adopt different amounts of, different number of wood stories that you can build on top of a concrete frame, is that accurate, Tom? And so, we could change, I think, we could like, change, so we would allow, within the existing height limits, we would allow people to build higher out of wood, but... Does anybody have any, anybody have any issue with this? No? Lisa, this was kind of, I think, something that you had brought up, and you're probably happy to see that reference go.
It just looks like you're promoting wood frame construction against all other things. I mean, and I don't know if that's the intent, though.
I don't read it that way.
Oh, okay.
And wood, wood construction has several advantages. It's somewhat cheaper, the insulation value is better, and you get that carbon sequestration, which everybody is talking about now.
Sorry, Lisa, did you have a comment? No? Okay. So is everybody okay with that change?
Yeah.
Okay, number 25 is regarding ADUs, so we can hold off on that one briefly. Number 27, so this was regarding policy H48. There's a revision to that. Instead of "Maintain an inventory of interim housing for target populations," it would read, "Expand the city's supply of interim housing for target populations and maintain an inventory of interim housing." I believe that was in response to Lisa's comment. Does that get at what you were looking at?
It does, thank you.
Does anybody have a comment on this one? Jeff?
Just a minor one. When I read it the first time, I read it as the housing that the city owns. You know, it's the city's housing. You're maintaining, you're actively maintaining inventory, and you're providing this housing. And I wasn't sure if that was just me misreading it, or, because you could read cities as the broad sense, or you could read cities as, "The city's going to start providing an inventory of housing." So, I don't know if I just read that wrong, or, here's an easier way to add a word in there, just so it's clear that you're working with all providers to provide that. Doesn't matter a whole lot.
Is there a way we could change that to?
I think if we make it a small C.
Small, yeah.
Oh, that's a good idea.
That means housing in the city, not housing that the city owns and operates.
Thank you, Greg.
That's the way to do it.
I think we're all okay with that. And in general, is there any, you know, further discussion, or anything on this particular policy change? All right, seeing no one. I think we can move forward with that one.
So it looks as if the next one is on page 13, and that is number 32, in the Capital Facilities and Utilities chapter. So, CF60 would say, "Develop a plan for library services in the northern area of the city, including consideration of a branch library." That was in place of, "Explore the provision of additional library services in the northern area of the city, including consideration of a branch library."
That's a lot stronger language.
I agree.
I like it.
Yeah, it shows a much more clear intent.
That's better language.
I think we received comment from some individuals during the public comment regarding that as well, so it's good to see that kind of coalesce in a policy.
Yeah, I, just a side note on that, I didn't know, but the branch library in the Barclay District, I'd been in there for the first time, it's pretty cool. And it was funded by the Barclay Company, then it's maintained by the city, but the space was donated, the improvements were donated, and, you know, something like that on the north end of the city could be a financially reasonable way to expand and get a branch location, and, you know, it'd be nice to have some language somewhere in there about exploring a public-private partnership like they did in Barclay. I mean, that's pretty unique, and it's a nice amenity for the people that live there, and, you know, not a huge expense to the city. I don't know what the annual operating budget is for that, but it's got to be significantly less than, like, the Fairhaven branch, which is fully funded by the city.
Do we have, do we have policy in the Capital Facilities section that talks about, I think we do, that talks about encouraging public-private partnership on?
Yeah, CF13 says, "Encourage public and private partnership to finance public facilities which foster economic development."
So, a library, I don't know that, that could be interpreted as fostering economic development, but I'm just wondering if, and we could, I don't know if that's in the comment tracker to get to that, but maybe expanding that towards things that serve, you know, a broader public benefit.
Community enrichment, along those lines.
Yeah, because, I mean, I think of shared parking facilities that could, you know, that's economic development, that would be fantastic, regional stormwater mitigation, things like that, but, you know, like, a public-private partnership to encompass a branch library, or some other park or trail that doesn't produce economic value, per se, would be good to include that. Is there anything on C13 in here? Are we going to talk about that, or?
What we could do is bring it back next week. We could add to C13 some additional information on that, so it would say, "Foster economic development, comma, and then go into, you know, providing other types of services and amenities," and we can just expand on that a little bit more.
Can you, can we do that? I mean, if everybody agrees on that. I just don't think you want to limit public-private partnerships only to the benefit of economic development. I think, you know, there's a lot of great uses that could come from that. The Barclay Library is a great example of that.
And?
Trails, parks, yeah, private parks, you know.
Is everybody okay with staff, Moshe's suggestion to try and add a little bit more clarification on that? I think it's a good suggestion, Garrett, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Moshe. Garrett, if you have thoughts during the week, you should email them to, about that language.
So then, are you okay with CF60, or did you?
Oh, sorry, I think everybody, I think everybody feels that, yeah, CF6, unless there's comment otherwise, that CF60 sends a much more direct message regarding the library
Okay.
in the north end.
But we'll also look at, what was the one?
CF13.
We'll also look at CF13. Okay, so the next one is number 34, which is revising CF43, also in the Capital Facilities chapter, to say, "Provide, maintain, and upgrade fire and police department facilities and equipment to meet the primary service needs of the city." And we've added "and police and equipment." Those are the new terms in that policy.
Any comment on this? It seems pretty, like, a pretty reasonable change. Yeah, thank you, I think. We're in agreement on that.
Sorry about the noise.
She had some new equipment over there.
New technology.
Okay, so the next one would be number 36, which is the Transportation Chapter, and that's policy T3. And it's striking out the within quarter mile of, so, it would say, "Encourage higher-density transit-oriented development, or TOD, along certain WTA high-frequency transit routes, go-lines connecting urban villages."
Lisa, you had a follow-up comment on this, if I recollect, for some modifications to the language.
Yeah, could we come back to this one? Because I think there's something else further on to reference, too.
Okay.
Jeff?
I had 64, too.
Yeah, so we had a couple of comments on that. Let's circle back to that one, if that's okay.
Okay, then the next one would be number 37 on page 15. "Propose modification of the bike-share TSM action under policy T15 to say, 'Explore the financial feasibility of a privately-funded bike-share program for Bellingham.'"
Garrett, was this your comment?
No, no, but I don't see any, I don't see any harm in that.
This was my comment, and that was... This was my comment, and that was after I researched, um, the several other cities that have implemented this as a partnership. And especially Seattle was in the news recently, where they had to buy it out for, I think it was one point four million. And there was a one million dollar grant that had they not bought out that partnership, they would have been on the hook to pay back. And I wasn't finding a lot of success in other cities, except for one that used it for tourism. And given that it was a fifty thousand dollar per station, um, currently to implement, and you'd have to have multiple stations, I just didn't want the city to do a partnership with someone and possibly get on the hook if it's not successful financially. So, that's why I wanted the privately-funded in there.
Does that, does that preclude the ability to do, if we, if we only say privately-funded like that, does that preclude our ability to pursue a public one? Let's say it did work financially?
I would assume, just like anything else, that if something comes up in the future, it doesn't
It works, doesn't stop us.
that we're not gonna be able to
Okay.
add to it.
Yeah.
Um, but if somehow there was just a, a wonderful deal and the city was not going to possibly be left holding the bag, and voters approved and all that kinda stuff, then, you know, it doesn't mean that we couldn't.
We can't do that, yeah, it's a good point.
I just didn't want someone coming along saying, look at this, the city wants to do this, and I've got a great deal for you.
Yeah, okay. Does anybody have a comment on that? I think we're okay with that.
Okay, great. Moving on to page sixteen, also in the transportation chapter, this is number thirty-nine, comment number thirty-nine. So, it's two policies proposed for modification, and this is both related to low-impact development. Policy T eleven would say, require all new development to construct sidewalks on all public streets abutting private property per city street standards. Where possible, sidewalks should be separated from roadways with landscape strips, street trees, rain gardens, or other low-impact development techniques. And then the next one is policy T twelve, require all new development to construct bike lanes on all arterial streets abutting private property per city street standards. Where possible, bike lanes should be constructed of pervious asphalt or concrete. And I would note that, that both of these concept, concepts are in the existing transportation chapter. I think they, in, in the translation, sometimes these things get lost when, when there's slight tweaks that were made. And Chris Como did review these, and he has recommended this language, so, he's our transportation planner.
Jeff?
In previous, uh, planning adventures over the years, we've had discussions over the different standards for when you trigger something. And where possible, uh, is actually a fairly high standard, because it means you're gonna do it. Because it's possible, as opposed to where feasible, or where economically possible, or where, I mean, Tom and I have been through that before, and, you know, going back years. And so, I just wanted to call everybody's attention to that, that, you know, when you're setting up those modifiers or the beginning clause, you know, you are actually saying, you're gonna be doing this if it's possible. And is that, um, is it, do we wanna soften that, or do we want, is that what we really mean here, in terms of a, a planning document, that you will do this?
Yeah, I mean, you're talking about pervious, pervious concrete, and, yeah.
Both, I suppose.
And both of those, yeah. And, and the requirement to develop, yeah. Where feasible is quite a bit different than where possible, I mean.
I'm in support of the concepts. I, I, you know, I don't wanna sound that way, it's more that we've just dealt with those, those clauses a number of times over the years, and I just wanna make sure our intent is clear.
What, how do we differentiate between feasible and possible? I don't have as much experience, because it seems to me like if something's feasible, it means, hey, you could do it. It's the same kinda idea, right? Or is it less, you're saying in past experience, you've seen that be a less?
We had, we's, on some policies, uh, we purposely softened the language. I think in, in, uh, Fairham Design Guidelines, there were a number of different things that've come up where we've looked at something and said, yes, that's a good idea, but we, the language is, almost makes it mandatory to do. And when I read that, I thought, boy, that brings back memories of having this conversation before. So, I'm in support of the general concepts, but I just wanted to point out that this means essentially that, you know, you're gonna do it.
And it's a, it's a policy, yeah, it's a policy document. I mean, if that word was where appropriate, that's a different meaning altogether.
I don't have an opinion, by the way.
You, you don't have a suggestion for?
I don't have a suggestion, I just wanna point that out, because it was something we worked through a number of times.
And I can check with Chris Como, but I would guess that T eleven, you definitely wanna keep the where possible, because that is a city standard, that is a priority, whereas T twelve, I would, I would guess is more of a a hopeful where possible, as far as the pervious asphalt, but I, I would need to check with them on that.
Well, I think it's pervious asphalt, and it's also just the requirement to develop, to construct bike lanes. You know, it says on all arterial streets abutting private property, so. It, the, I guess, and I'm, I'm reading the second statement, which is, you know, the, talking about potential in lieu of fee programs, and, and I see what he's saying about, how do you quantify that? That's the challenge with, with this, with T twelve, is that, you know, if it doesn't make any sense, what mechanism does a property owner have to get relief from that requirement, if it really doesn't make sense? If you're at a, if you're, if your property is on an arterial and butts a retaining wall in the York neighborhood by the freeway, and you gotta extend the bike lane so somebody can drive into the freeway retaining wall, it doesn't make any sense. What provision is them to say, hey, I, I want a relief from this?
There'll be a variance, I guess.
Those cost, you know, two grand.
Well, the, the bigger issue that I was a little concerned about with, with T eleven is that you're always dealing with, with balancing different objectives. And one of the things we've talked about, uh, before is the whole concept where, when you're, um, developing a commercial property, that sometimes you wanna have a wide sidewalk, you don't wanna have a strip, you wanna use some of that space for a public access area. This actually says, actually, where possible, you will have a landscape strip, and you will have street trees, and you will have rain gardens. So, I'm just pointing out that there's, like, this is a very firm statement that you will do that. And there are sometimes conflicting design things that you might wanna consider for a particular property. So, I don't know, I'm just pointing out that I, it just sent my little sensors going.
Well, and one other thing I would point out is that there are some new state stormwater rules regarding low-impact development that I, I'm not, you know, well-versed on them, but I do know that low-impact development is trickling down, and it's now a requirement. I don't know to what extent, as far as these policies are concerned, but I know that Chris is aware of them.
Well, I can withdraw my point, if, it, it's just, you know, this, things like this sometimes conflict with affordable housing, for example. You know, it's just, you can do it, or we can soften it, or we can just leave it to staff discretion to implement.
And I'd just make a comment that, um, um, the old section of Edgemore would be out of compliance with T eleven. They have no sidewalks, curbs, they have storm ditches, and, and no bicycle lanes, so, you know. And this is, I guess you could say, the most exclusive neighborhood in Bellingham.
But that's a good point. So, if, uh, you take the entire neighborhood doesn't have sidewalk or bike lanes, and somebody wants to develop a single-family residence on Briar Road, they have to build a bike lane and a sidewalk in front of that development? Is that, am I, am I interpreting that? Is that what that reads?
I don't know, Chris isn't here to answer those questions, but.
Bike lane that would go to nowhere?
Well, that's a question I had, too, is what is all-new development? Because, for example, in, you know, today, not all the, like, if you propose a single-family residence, you don't have to do a street improvement. And if you do a short plot with less than four lots, you don't have to make a sidewalk improvement. Um, is this a, that was my biggest question, was is this a significant change in the application of that? Would we be asking someone who's doing a single-family home to do a hundred feet of sidewalk in front of their house?
No, he's referencing the code section.
Okay, so I saw that, and I thought that's what he was referencing that for.
Yeah, he's referencing the code, so he's saying that this policy lines up with our code, our current code.
That to a certain degree addresses your concerns, I think, because those code sections speak to the situations in which you don't have to make an improvement. And Public Works actually has more discretion than anybody, correct me if I'm wrong, to make administrative calls on those kinds of things. Some of them still require variances, but they can actually, say, unlike planning in certain instances, make an administrative call on, on, uh, something like that.
So, should it say, instead of all new development, should, or, I, I, I guess I see the intent is that, that new development should, should it say, you know, require all applicable, applicable development to construct? You know, if it, if it, if the code triggers it, then that's fine, but, I mean, I know this isn't a regulation, it's a policy document, it's just confusing to me.
Well, he says per city standards, so, and then he references the standard, I guess, so, that's the same.
That's the improvement, though, that's the actual improvement, right? Per city street standards, that's the physical improvement, not the standard governing you to do it. That's the, that's the construction of the.
No, no, thirteen oh four actually has a bunch of subsections that say, you know, this is the standard, this is when it's applied, this is how you apply it, this is how you request relief from it. It's a, it's a section that includes a number of subsections.
Okay, so that's more the control.
If it said like thirteen oh four oh one oh or something, it would refer to the specific standard.
Okay.
I think.
I, I can take this back to Chris, you know, and we can look at some of this language. I, I mean, I do kinda wanna get back to the part that we changed, which is the low-impact development piece, and, and I think, Tom, didn't, weren't you the one that suggested this? I mean, what, do you remember what your intent was on, on that?
Jeff, do you have a comment?
Uh, actually, I think if, since this is a plan, I think if it says encourage these things, and then the city code requires it in some circumstances, but not other circumstances, that probably just takes care of it. Because it's staking a, a policy statement as this is something the city wants to do, and then in code, you decide when it's appropriate and what's not. So, that might just solve the whole thing.
I, I, I agree. I mean, this is an aspirational document, it's not, it's not regulations or ordinance. This is getting very specific, and it seems like it's a requirement. And, and it's not clear to where it's required, to me, I would agree.
Encourage sidewalks to be separate from roadways, and encourage bike lanes to be constructed of pervious asphalt?
Yeah, yeah, the code would govern that.
Yeah, you could just, the first word could be encourage all new development to construct sidewalks, blah, 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 and then, you know. Uh, actually, if you just did that, where possible, wouldn't matter so much.
Right.
Because it's still part of, uh, overall encouragement. Because I think that's fair, I mean, we do want this stuff, it's just blanket statements get in trouble sometimes.
I'd say required to encourage. Yeah, I would be good, but I think that makes sense. I think that makes a lot of sense, we could put that one to sleep.
Where, what, what's the suggestion speci, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna make a proposal, we need to make a very specific.
To change the word required to encourage.
First word of each.
And leave everything else, leave the where possible?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we should probably speak to Lisa's original question, too, which is, do we like the low-impact, uh, changes? Because we kinda went off of the, the underlying topic. I, I personally am supportive of both of them.
I do, I'm supportive of that.
So, um, what's, what's been proposed is to change, uh, the first word to encourage on both of those, and leave the reference to where possible for these low-impact techniques, because that gives that element strength. Is, is that something that everyone is supportive of, or if not, there's, you know, you can always dissent if you don't believe so? Looks like we're all around, Lisa, do you have any more comments on that? No?
Sorry, I was just mulling over, um, no, I'll, I'll support encourage.
Okay, we can see what Chris thinks about that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I will have to, you know, run that by Chris, and not to say that he won't come back with the rebuttal, but, but, but this is.
It's more than welcome, too.
Okay, just to let you know.
And I, I'm assuming there's gonna be situations in this recommendation of the council where staff differs in their recommendation, and that's, that's okay. That's why we kinda wanted them to be next to each other, so that, you know, council can see the two different thought processes, maybe.
Well, it'll illuminate the reasoning, too. If, if Chris comes back and says, no, hey, look, this is the reason why, and this is referencing a specific code, and this is why we feel like it should be required, then we'll have more information to make a better decision.
Change our mind, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, let's move on from that one.
Okay, the next one is the environment chapter, and that is on page seventeen of the tracker, and that's comment number forty-two.
Pardon me.
So, this is EV thirteen. The comment was to remove first-consider. So, we discussed this, uh, this particular policy with, with Public Works staff, and came up with a revised version, which says, select wetland mitigation sites for unavoidable impacts based on current state mitigation guidance documents, and on the watershed approach with emphasis on the ecologically preferable site. The watershed approach should be conducted at the level of the city's watershed boundaries or lower. And then we do have a watersheds map in the chapter for reference.
I have a comment on this. If, Garrett, did you wanna say something? I think it's, I think it's a good change in the language. Uh, I think it's captures, it captures more of, of the concept, without getting specific to any particular approach. I would, I, I would recommend we strike the entire last sentence from the policy. The watershed approach should be conducted at the level of the city's watershed boundaries or lower. That, that sentence effectively says, you should only be allowed to mitigate within the city's watershed. And that eliminates options to mitigate out in the county, or use the only existing bank that we have in the county, which is the Lummy Reservation. Effectively, it says, we're not gonna look outside our boundary. And I think that that is premature. I know that we have policy in this update that talks about citing a wetland bank in our watershed, and/or developing an in-lu program, but we don't have those yet. So, as written, this would effectively put a stop on all, uh, bank use until that such time that we developed a bank, and that could be ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, or never. Um, and so, I think it would be appropriate to say, um, in the event the city develops a mitigation bank or in-lu program, the watershed approach should be conducted at the level of the city's watershed boundaries or lower. Or something along those, in the event the city develops a mitigation bank or in-lu program, th- those facilities should take priority as an option, so that we, we capture that intent, but we don't pigeonhole ourselves into having no options in the foreseeable future. So, that's just my comment on, on that particular sentence.
Okay, and I would say that, that we did list out all of the various mitigation policies in all the chapters, and we worked with Public Works, and to make sure that they all work together and that everything's addressed. So, I think if you looked at this in context with the other policies, that it probably gets at that.
But, but.
It, this, it says should be, it's not a, a require, it's not a shell.
So, what happens when someone proposes an, or has an unavoidable impact, and there's no available options within the city's watershed boundaries? Or, let's say there is an option, but it's really, really expensive in comparison to another option?
Well, that's why it says current state mitigation guidance documents, and on the watershed approach, but
We're.
the first part is that, it says that, that the sites be based on, on state mitigation, first off.
But, but state, state, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around, the state mitigation does allow for off-site, you know, mitigation makes, so the, like, the Lummy Bank would be in play there.
Exactly.
But then you're going in specifically.
There are like directly contradictory sentences, effectively.
No, I think there's a preference for the watershed approach, and this, that, that's actually the preference of, of the state, but they allow other things. So, I think.
The state looks at our entire county as a watershed. The, the Lummy Bank is approved as a, as a bank resource for the entire Nuxack watershed. Some of Bellingham doesn't flow into that, most of Bellingham doesn't flow into that, but they, when they set the boundary for the bank, they included Point Roberts and Lummy Island, and almost all of Waukun County, except the Chuckanets. Because it's, it's like, they, the state and the Fed said, the most valuable ecological area in our entire county isn't in the city, it's at the mouth of our delta, of our primary river, so that's the most important thing we need to protect. There, I, I'm just saying, I, I've, I've worked with this a little bit, and their perspective is much broader than the city's, because they look at, obviously, because they're not just looking at the city. And they're saying, the watershed approach is looking at a bigger watershed than just the city's watershed. I'm just a little bit concerned, I've got some experience with this, and I'm a little bit concerned about this language being used to actually restrict options further than, and, and the whole intent in changing this was, I think, to push these different options that exist today, that we didn't have ten years ago.
So, one way to solve that is to change that last sentence to basically just state that a preference would be given to the city watershed, that a preference would be given to the city watershed, to the city watershed developments as opportunities arise in the future.
Completely.
You're there, I think.
I think, I, I agree with it completely, my, I think making sure that it's in reference to opportunities that come up, because there aren't any right, I guess that's my issue, is there's none right now. So, if we just say we're gonna prefer things that don't exist, it's kinda silly, but, actually, that's, can you repeat that?
I think it was just, uh, the, the, uh, no, I can't repeat that, whatever.
You said that you, to give preference to city watersheds as opportunities arise. So, we can work on-
However it gets wordsmithed.
Modifying that last sentence to reflect what Jeff said.
Preference to-
I mean, I, I think that a change would be fine, I just think, you, you know, the watershed approach with the emphasis on the ecologically preferable site, I think that's probably the biggest thing right there.
Yeah, and, and that's, um, when you look at these, sometimes there's like a really low quality critical area in the city, and finding some other mitigation site that may not be available in the city is actually not ecologically preferable to taking that really not very valuable resource in the city, and exporting that mitigation to a place where it really could have a lot of value, that just might happen to be outside the city. Those situations exist, and I just don't want us to not have the option to do that.
I think you could just strike it, I, I don't see why, if, you know, it talks clearly about, you know, you're, you're governed by state law, state mitigation guidance documents, that's gonna guide the approach, and that you put an emphasis on the most ec- ecologically preferable site. If that happens to be within the city limits, great, if it's without, if it's outside the city limits, just because the city has a mitigation banking option that's available, doesn't mean it's the best, most ecologically beneficial place to have it. So, why, why even have it?
But who decides that, I mean, you know, there's a, a decision point where you start looking at some of the more urban waters that are kind of a write-off versus doing a larger project in the city or out of the city. Is the city making that judgment, is the proponent making that judgment?
So, you're saying to, to have just a little further guidance, cause, I mean, you hire consultant, an environmental consultant to, to do the study, right, you know?
Well, yeah, but the city has to decide, and, and I don't see anything wrong with having a, a preference for city projects improving the city watershed.
I don't either, necessarily.
So, I, I, I actually think that's a good thing, um, so.
Yeah, it would be nice to have that often, in ten, you know, however long it takes, ten years to get it, but it'd be good.
Um, just, I know who decides, and it's the, it's, usually, it's the city in conjunction with the state and the federal government. You have to get three permits to have an impact, and so, a biologist might write a report with an opinion, and then those three agencies collaborate typically to determine if, you know, it's the best choice. So, there's some oversight in it, but I'm okay having the, I, I agree, Jeff, I'm okay saying this, this, we wanna focus it in the city, if those opportunities exist, and that's kinda where I, I think that's my issue, is, and, and that's why what you said, I, resonated with me a little bit, because, um, without making it clear that we have to, you know, we have to have the opportunity to do that.
My, my, I'll, I, I'll go with you guys on this, my last comment though is, you know, if the, if the city doesn't provide a, a mitigation banking option, and it's not even close to competitive with, say, what the Lummi Reservation has, you're just saying right there that that should be preferential, if it's five times the cost. See, this doesn't, that doesn't help affordable housing. What if it's, we don't have no control over what it's gonna cost, what if it's ten times as much? And you, you have a policy that says, give preference to the city.
But, wouldn't you think the city would wanna, wanna encourage people to use their bank, and therefore lower prices? To act like a, like a market-driven, uh, entity, no?
Being driven there to begin with.
Yeah, I don't know if staff's gonna, not you guys, but the critical, the environmental staff and public work staff is gonna be supportive of my reference, I doubt it. Uh, because I know that they have a, 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 a window that they're looking through that is focused on our community only. So, I, I don't know if it makes sense to go back and ask them if they would accept some change, um, that speaks to preference to city watersheds as opportunities arise, I think is the term Jeff used. Um, and if, and if so, that makes it easier, and if they don't, then maybe we could have a brief debate about it again next week, and, and if you, if, you know, if it's not a popular idea, we move on.
Okay, yeah, we'll take that back to him, it doesn't seem like a very major change from what they suggested here.
No. Okay, thank, thank you everybody for entertaining that, from me.
Number forty-three is the next one, and it was to, uh, define mitigation. And so, we proposed a new policy that says, encourage development of mitigation options such as a mitigation bank or in-lu fee program. Well, actually, this is the new mitigation policy, we just made a change to it.
Is everybody okay with that change? Okay.
Does that help clarify that one?
Yes, thank you. I don't know whose that was.
So then, next-
Mr. Chairman, we've been at this for an hour and a half, should we give a five-minute break?
Oh yeah, should we take a break now, yeah, it might take a little while, does everybody wanna take, maybe ten minutes? Is that okay? Thanks, great, good suggestion.
Well, right now, it says Bellingham accommodates and manages growth primarily by encouraging the development of mixed-use urban villages, and that would be replaced with foster vibrant urban villages. And we're, we're stating that because that particular vibrant commercial center section is more focused on the villages than it is on the city's overall growth strategy. And there are many other policies focused on that in other chapters. Does that make sense?
I'm, I'm a little confused about where we're cha-, what, what we're changing where, sorry.
Let's, let's grab our, our economic development chapter, and then you can go to-
Oh, I, I see.
It's goal number four on page seventeen.
Goal four is in the vibrant, is the, is the goal for the vibrant commercial center.
Yeah, there's a section called vibrant commercial centers, and then the goal was talking about accommodating and managing growth primarily by encouraging the development of mixed-use urban villages. So, in talking with Tara, we just confirmed that, really, that the rest of the policies are talking about urban villages, they're not talking about our broader, broader growth strategy. So, we can just keep that consistent with the urban village goals that we used elsewhere, foster vibrant urban vill-, urban villages.
That makes sense to me, thank you. Does anybody have comment on that?
Well, I guess, yeah, I have a comment, I just, question is, are we, are we acknowledging, you're talking about the city's overall growth strategy, are we acknowledging that we are, our growth strategy is to promote growth within the city limits, not only urban villages?
Yes.
I think that's an important distinction, we still have, you know, developable land within the city limits, that's not in, in urban growth, or in a village, urban village. And, and by not expanding any UGAs, we've prioritized that growth should occur within our city limits. So, policy supporting that is good.
Yes, and like, for example, page two of the housing chapter says, the city's growth strategy is to infill in mixed-use urban villages and vacant land zoned for residential development within the current city limits. No upzones or UGA expanses are needed to accommodate the twenty-year population forecast, et cetera. So, that's getting at what you just said about growth within the city limits and existing UGA.
So, it, it's gonna read as stated here.
It's just gonna say foster vibrant urban villages, so it's, it removes, yeah, it removes the reference to a discussion of our overall growth strategy, and it just talks about just urban villages, yeah.
Okay, good.
Phyllis, did you have a comment on that? Okay, I think every, Lisa, I think everybody's okay with that.
The next one is comment number forty-five. And the suggestion was that protection of light industrial land is important, and we should consider adding policy LU twenty-six from the land use chapter to the economic development chapter. So we're proposing a new policy for the economic development chapter stating industrial zoned land in the UGA should be reserved for industrial uses and appropriate accessory uses. And that's a pull-over from the policy in the land use chapter.
Jeff?
Excuse me. I actually just have in general the same concern I had with light manufacturing, but it may be mitigated if the definition of industrial in this case is broad enough. You know, there's a lot of research, you know, in biotech and a lot of things that are not normally considered light industrial. And would that include that? Because if the primary interest is having it not be retail, should we say that instead of saying industrial? Because it all depends on how inclusive or exclusive the industrial zoning is when you use that term. Do you have an idea?
Well, from what I know in regards to annexations for light impact industrial or other industrial zones in the county, they come in as a, under a zoning designation of industrial plan, which allows professional offices and also basically limits retail development within those areas because it's primarily meant for industrial uses. And so that's generally a carryover when we adopt comparable zoning for that area. But the Urban Fridge Subarea Plan, which is the document we use when we evaluate annexation areas, states to adopt comparable zoning. So that's something that we do look at. So a lot of our annexed areas to the north have that limit on retail development, but it does talk about professional offices in there, too.
Okay, well, that was my main concern is, you know, economic development opportunities come in all forms. And sometimes in the past, industrial has been, there used to be a heavy industrial, you know, GP, and it was a heavy industrial versus light industrial. And I remember it being somewhat restrictive sometimes in how broad you expand that. So I just wanted to make sure we weren't being unintentionally boxing something in again, but that sounds good to me.
I had the same concern. The Barkley speaker brought up, like, flexibility because they have a big industrial section. And I think he was saying that a lot of their development is more like office, high, you know, and they have, you have finance, research and development, good-paying jobs. And, but I think that even our LII zoning allows offices and those kinds of things with a restriction on like the retail component. So we, 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 like, even though we say industrial uses, that still picks up, with our current zoning, it still picks up those, like, fringe, fringe uses. Even in our, and I mean, not just in our UGA where we bring in county, but in our current LII.
But on our current LII, it does allow straight-out retail use.
It does.
It does. Yeah, in those areas. So if you looked like down Iowa, you know, where all the car sales are and things of that nature, that's, excuse me, LII. It's a little bit more restricted when you look at industrial plan, which areas that weren't, that were annexed probably in the early 2000s, you know, allow a little bit different range of uses due to code changes at the county and when we adopted comparable zoning. But those areas allow some sort of retail. I mean, if you look like at Walmart, that's kind of a retail and an industrial planned area. But they also provide a couple of different services that was determined to be appropriate for that zone. Not only do they do retail, they do like a home center to sell, you know, landscaping plans as well as other types of items. So basically, the whole guide area is under, well, not the whole guide, but the northern end is, is the industrial area there. But recent annexations, we've still been limiting retail uses in those areas that come into the city.
Okay.
So I think basically this policy is just saying that we want to encourage industrial uses to develop in industrial-owned land. We don't want it chipped away with Walmarts and et cetera. So I think it's getting at that intent, and we hope that that works for people.
Yeah. Tom?
Can I just have an editorial question? Where would this come in this document? Would it be, would you be adding a policy ED thirty-eight A or something like that, you know, under goal ED three? Or do we renumber from on?
I don't know yet. I haven't, I haven't found a spot for it yet. I just want to make sure it thumbs up before we start looking for a spot.
I would recommend in the land and infrastructure section because the goal there speaks to maintaining an adequate supply of developable employment lands and supporting infrastructure to accommodate growth and accomplish these economic development goals. It seems like that might be the fit. Does everybody feel comfortable with that policy addition? Looks like it.
Okay, the next one is comment forty-six. And that is in regards to policy ED thirty. So we would add identify employment land that lacks sufficient infrastructure and coordinate city investments in utilities, transportation, and other public facilities with business and employment opportunities whenever possible. So the new language is identify employment land that lacks sufficient infrastructure.
I think that's a good change. I mean, we talked about that when we reviewed that chapter, and I think that's a positive change.
Anybody else have comment on that? Okay, I think that, that we can support that.
Comment number forty-seven is to modify the SWOT analysis to state that the shipping terminal is in reference to a Bellingham shipping terminal. So we've added the word Bellingham before shipping terminal.
Sounds good.
Easy one. We can do that. Comment number forty-eight is to modify ED forty-one regarding the cleanliness and safety of downtown. So I've actually reworked that one a little bit because I felt like the existing policy was a little awkward. And added some bullet points to kind of pull out those areas that we want to focus on. So it would say, "Implement the visions of the downtown Bellingham plan, which strive to further a downtown that is economically healthy, is clean, safe, and welcoming, encourages environmentally friendly business practices, and offers a variety of residential, retail, office service, cultural, civic, and recreational opportunities." And of course, the downtown plan includes much, much more than that.
Yeah, I think I'd a comment towards that. You know, I mean, you know, my wife and I operate a store downtown, and, you know, that is, it is, those are issues that are addressed in the downtown plan. And there's a lot of groups that work towards that. I think it's important to acknowledge it. And I think that's much better written than the ED forty-one was. It was kind of lengthy, and you kind of lose some of the impact. Bullet pointing it out like that, just hitting the points, it's good. Great.
Any other comments? I think, yeah, I think we're okay with that as well.
Okay.
Otherwise, so...
So the next one, that he was saying, he was the author of the original ED forty-one.
No.
I apologize.
It's all right. I'll get over the best.
Good framework for us.
It was yours for eight years.
That's right.
Okay, so I'm looking for it, but the next one is the community design chapter, excuse me. So comment number fifty-one. So it's saying regarding the third to last bullet point under policy CD two, add clarifying language to indicate that the policy is needed to eliminate barriers for aerial apparatus. So we've modified the third to last bullet point to say coordinate placement of physical features between streets and buildings to accommodate staging areas for emergency response vehicles, including aerial apparatus. So, and this bullet point will also be moved up to the list to come after the fourth bullet, which begins with where possible install physical buffers between the sidewalk and traffic. Does that get at your suggestion?
It does, thank you.
I think it's a cleaner read, yeah. So unless there's additional comments, we can, I think, accept that change? Thank you.
Comment number fifty-two is to remove the second to last bullet point under CD two regarding urban villages as this topic is also referenced in policy CD twenty-seven and is more appropriate in that location. So staff is proposing that we remove that, that second to last bullet point as suggested.
Is this related to the one we were talking about earlier?
Well, we'll hash that out in the other, this was just a duplicate one.
Oh, this is just a duplicate? Okay, I just want to make sure we didn't miss your two additional, that was, okay. So this is really just completely eliminating this from this section? Does anybody have any concerns about that? It doesn't look like it. All right.
So then, from there, we move to the newer set of comments. There are a few yellow highlighted areas in that set. So the next one would be comment number seventy-seven on page twenty-six. This would be a new policy after ED twenty-two to explore and pursue opportunities to solicit and attract new investment and expansion from businesses outside the Bellingham area, both regionally and nationally. So the new policy would be working with the Port of Bellingham, Watcom County, and others, explore and pursue opportunities to solicit and attract new investment and expansion from businesses outside the Bellingham area, both regionally and nationally. And in talking with Tara, she really wanted to stress that this is a partnership and that the Port of Bellingham has really taken on that role of reaching out outside the community to recruit.
I think this was my comment, and I just wanted, I, I recognized that our, as you noted, you know, our focus is on existing businesses. And I think we talk about that in the chapter. But I didn't see anything specific to our outreach efforts. So I thought I would propose some language that addressed that. And I'm completely comfortable, understanding the dynamic that goes on between the different agencies. I'm completely supportive of the change that staff has proposed to what I wrote. And so I'd just be curious if any other commissioners have a discussion on the, on the concept in general. But what I was trying to get at was just the idea of, you know, making it clear that where we can go out and look for, for other opportunities that are out there. Garrett, do you have a comment?
Well, I mean, I like it. You know, the port probably is the agency that's most directly responsible for attracting, you know, in businesses. But getting, working with the port, the city should work with the port and get feedback. You know, if they're, if the ports make an outreach for certain businesses and they're getting specific feedback that the city's lacking this thing,
Yeah.
then that should be, you know, a discussion that's had. So from a policy standpoint, that makes a lot of sense. And I like the way it was, you know, written, and it sort of clarifies the roles, too.
Yeah, yeah, with the addition of the other language. Jeff?
And I'm fine with that language. It, I've just had some exposure to economic development folks in the past, and it's always interesting to me because, you know, there's a lot of effort put into soliciting businesses to come and going and recruiting. Whereas I sort of see as, if a city has housing available, has a workforce available, and everything makes sense, the business is gonna want to move here.
Sure.
And along that vein, when I look at the first comment on there, that the priority needs to be on growing existing businesses first. I'm very curious what city role there would be in growing existing businesses and what that means. Because I, it's somewhat counterintuitive to me because I figured once a business is up and running and they're operating, and they're hiring people, and they're doing whatever, what does the city do? Why would that business be the emphasis of the city's economic development? I'm just curious. Is there a rationale there?
I mean, Tara could certainly speak to this a little more eloquently. But I think the rationale is that we, if they're, they're growing, then they can move to other spots. And then that smaller spot could open up to a startup local business or something like that.
Costco.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or like, or like even like, like I know Bellingham Cold Storage has expanded up Squawakum Creek is the example I was thinking of. Like, we want to help that business grow. But...
Our local businesses to thrive, so we're focused on local business.
And you're right, you know, a lot of time, there's a lot of like, used car salesmen out there trying to sell on the topic of, from other places and expansion. But I do think it's important to note it because there's other things like, I actually, what triggered this, to be honest, was a commercial I saw on TV for the city of Portland. And I was like, wow, that made me want to go to Portland. And we have a relatively fair haven, there's tourism here, and there's, you know, the hotel draw, and that supports the local economy. And so I actually, that's how I first thought of it, was like, things that the city could be doing to promote ourselves to exterior sources. And I realize that that costs a lot of money. We don't have those funds now. But, you know, just generally, it's good to say, hey, let's look, let's look outside, too, even if it's second. So anyway, that's, that's where I went with it. Does everybody think it's okay? Yeah? All right.
Okay, so comment number eighty-seven, Greg just pointed out that I didn't actually modify that policy very well. I was typing too fast, I think, but, so policy ED nine. The suggestion was to place tourism behind economic activities. But if you look at what we proposed, we forgot to remove it from the first part.
Extra important.
Yes, tourism, tourism. So it would say, "Aid the efforts of business associations to promote economic activities and tourism." That was the intent, correct, was to, Tom, I think you suggested that, is that right? No, you don't, okay. Was to emphasize the economic activities first and tourism second.
Is everybody okay with that change? Yeah, looks like it.
So I think that's the end of the, the yellow, except for the ones that we skipped. So now I have to go back and talk about those.
Yeah, and a lot of them are not really, a lot of them seem to me to be just clarifications or things like that that we may be able to brush over. Staff didn't propose a lot of changes based on the comments that the planning commissioners made on Monday or Tuesday. So I have a feeling that the back few pages are going to generate more discussion where we might want to express some thoughts that staff maybe didn't support change. But does it make sense to everybody to run through, try and quickly run through the ones that aren't highlighted, starting at the beginning? And we may, obviously skipping the, yeah, skipping the ones that are part of the bigger topics or that we already talked about.
So you don't want to go back to the one, to the highlighted ones that we wanted to hold off?
Well, that's my question is, do we, Jeff, Jeff expressed a question at the beginning, you know, are we just gonna automatically assume all these ones that aren't highlighted are a done deal? And I don't think we should do that. So my question is, do we go to the main topics now, the big three, so to speak, that we identified? Or do we go through all these other little ones that individual commissioners might have a desire to discuss first? Thoughts?
I have a thought on that.
Thought?
Maybe we could just, you know, have a minute where, I, I think maybe folks have identified things that aren't highlighted that they want, would like to speak about. And as opposed to going through them
All of them?
One by one, just if you have an item that wasn't highlighted and you'd like some discussion on it, bring it up, bring it up now.
Jeff?
I guess, what is our proposed adjournment time?
I think that we're gonna spend a little bit of time talking about ADUs and land use policy number ten. And then there's that transportation policy number three. Those are the three we skipped.
So should we do that first and then see how much time we have left, if any? And then figure out how we want to deal with the rest?
Scoot through the minor things, yeah.
Just because another approach is if we run out of time and we do the, you know, people could always provide written communication about why they feel that they're...
On the new stuff that they brought up recently.
The new stuff they brought up that got dismissed, they could bring it up again in the intervening week and, and, you know, an appeal. Or something like that.
That's a good idea, I think, if everyone's okay with that. And that way, we do give ourselves the most possible time. Because I'd like to, I'd like to adjourn by ten. Yeah. Cinderella. Right?
Okay.
So maybe the first one is the LU ten discussion. Since it's number one, why don't we start with that? Is that okay?
So it looks like that's comment number one, and then it's also on comment number fifty-five. I believe that was Garrett's comment. To remove inclusionary zoning from the list. Continue to implement and seek new innovative tools to achieve a healthy mix of housing that is affordable to a wide range of incomes, including but not limited to, but not limited to is a part that we've added. And then there's a list of items and one that, that Garrett's suggesting to remove inclusionary zoning and to add... to remove inclusionary zoning and to add public-private partnerships for shared parking facilities, wetland mitigation, regional stormwater management.
I could, I could speak to that on, I like the ad of but not limited to, it's just, you know, leaving more options available. I just, you know, the inclusionary zoning, I think it has a tendency to seem like a magic fix. And it's kind of getting away from some of the things that are more, could be more of the root of the cause. I mean, there's a lot of things that go into housing affordability. Land supply, availability of buildable land is certainly a big one. There's been, you know, references to that throughout the chapters. And I just think that when we see these things like inclusionary zoning, they, they present a magic fix that don't really work. When you look at communities that have inclusionary zoning into their land use regulations, they're some of the most expensive places in the country, San Francisco, Boston. Housing is not affordable there. So is it really working and is it appropriate? Because basically what that's saying is that a landowner or builder would have to, you know, include. The specifics of it, if it's implemented, I don't think help affordable housing. And I think it's just these tag words that people put in there and these ideas that seem, seem great, but distract us from the root cause, which probably more importantly is, you know, land availability. And we've talked about that at length in the, in the, you know, the, with the UGAs. So, I mean, I, I would like to see that removed, and I, I'd like to, as a first step in that direction is, let's come up with creative incentives that would induce a landowner or a builder to include an affordable housing component to their project based on merit and based on something that works for the market instead of entertaining the idea of just a flat requirement saying, hey, you must put twenty percent or ten percent or whatever the number is. It's, it's setting a policy or a course for how are we gonna deal with trying to get more affordable housing components into projects for new developments? I think incentives, density bonuses, height bonuses is the way to do that.
Jeff?
I guess one of my questions is whether inclusionary zoning works under a certain range of circumstances. For example, if you have very high-end apartments, so if you've got things selling for six hundred thousand to a million five or something like that, and you take a chunk of that and you kick that in towards providing more affordable housing, you're probably not going to change the purchase decision of the person buying that high-end unit. But if you take a, you know, a development where you're selling a lot of the units at two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand, and you try to kick that up by ten percent in order to support more affordable housing, you are actually kicking something out of the lowercase affordable bracket. So I'm just kind of curious, if it does work in certain circumstances, are those circumstances appropriate for Bellingham? Is one question. Another question is, is there a better way to do it? For example, where there are waivers on impact fees or something that provide about the same per-unit offset in cost that you would expect by having that cross-subsysation, and what does that do? And third is, if inclusionary zoning is taken out of here, it's not removed from the city's toolbox. It's just not flagged in the comp plan, right? There would be nothing that would prevent them from figuring out what does actually work at what level of, of build or, or market pricing and figure out how to do that in the future, even if it's not in the comp plan. So that was my observations. They're not all questions, but in any event, it seems like that's kind of the way I look at that.
I just have a response to that. I, I think, I think it just said, I agree in the setting a policy course and it's just, what's the best way to solve the affordable housing issues? You know, is it to make a mandate and a requirement that says you have to do this, which usually has unintended consequences? You think that it's gonna produce some result and it produces a different one? Or try to create an environment that induces or incentivizes people to incorporate that, and then it's supported by a market that says, yes, this works? Instead of trying to think of, like you said, every outcome, how does this work if they're high-end or low-end? So many variables. Come up with incentives that create the proper environment for people to want to do it and make it work. Just seems like a better policy decision if you're thinking about how are we gonna work on these problems.
Lisa?
Question for staff. I think there's a lot of, I want to say bonuses or hopefully some good enticement to create affordable housing, like the bonus density, you know, various things. But with this inclusionary zoning, having it in here does not necessarily mean that it's gonna be mandated, that if someone is putting a development in, they have to set a certain amount aside. Is this just a tool that could be used as, I don't want to say part of negotiation because I don't think the city would have a heavy hand over someone, but are you including this in here to just be a tool so that if someone comes forward and says, I want to do this? You can say, well, if you do inclusionary, where you set aside twenty percent for a lower cost, then we can do that. I guess I'm just trying to figure out why it's in here, like, what is the, what is the benefit for a developer? And what's the, I know the development for the, I mean, the benefit for the community, but having it in here, what, what would be the, would there be a benefit for a developer?
Well, I mean, as far as why it's in here, it's in the existing comprehensive plan. It's a carryover. I mean, obviously, we didn't do anything with it over the past several years, and I think that's because there wasn't traction for it, and there may not continue to be traction for it. But I think, like you said, it's a tool, and we're looking at it as an option and part of the toolbox. We have a lot of incentives. We don't have a lot of things that require developers to, to do these things. We are incentive-driven on this, the affordable housing issue, so it's, it's another tool. That's an option. And if it doesn't gain traction over the next comp plan cycle, we can take it out at some point, but, but I think it's, it's, it's good to leave it in there as an option.
Lisa, do we actually see people who would opt for that as inclusionary zoning in practice? Who would be coming in to do a development and would look at it as a positive thing, as opposed to being forced into something?
Well, I mean, if we're looking at actually changing our zoning to include inclusionary zoning, it would be more of a regulatory tool. It wouldn't be an optional tool, which I think is what maybe you were asking about as well. I mean, this, developer can come in at any time and say, hey, you know, I worked with the neighborhood and, and I real, I know the context of this area, and I know that we're really working on affordable housing, and I choose to set aside a certain percent. They can do that voluntarily. They can do that through density bonuses. They can do that through a lot of other tools that we have right now.
I would be totally in favor of removing anything that would be mandatory. This is my.
And that is, if you look at the, that sort of the tenor of all those bullet points, most of them provide action, tools, you know, the info-housing toolkit, which includes, you know, small lots, townhomes, accessory dwellings. It's the expansion of opportunity to do different things. The inclusion of a public-private partnership to share parking liabilities would, would be a tool. That's the only item on that list that's a mandate. And it has a completely different tenor than any of the other bullet points, and it, you know, I believe not the, not the best tool for solving the problem.
Lisa?
So if this was to stay in here, does that then, because it's been in there before and it wasn't necessarily a mandate, for this to be triggered into a mandate that any development of certain size would be required to provide the inclusionary zoning? Would there be, I would assume there'd be an additional process to go through in order to get that zoned through? And there'd be additional public comment and people weighing in specifically to that, correct?
Yes, I mean, it would be similar as to what we're going through with the, the ADU ordinance update, for instance. It's a legislative process with public input, et cetera.
So if it is not, if it is not in here, if we were to strike this, but let's say two years from now, the city decides we really need to have inclusionary zoning with future development, would they be, would someone, planning city or whomever come, be able to come forward and start that process to create a mandate without it being in the comp plan?
It would be much more difficult to do so.
When we, when we review an ordinance, we're reviewing it against consistency with our comp plan. I mean, that's one of the criteria that you, staff presents to us, for example. I would think it would be much more difficult. I, I, I agree with philosophically with pretty much everything you said. And, and I have concern about what Jeff has talked about, the, the real impact on housing prices in a community where the prices, the range isn't huge and we don't have million-dollar condos. I, I have concern about taking things out and then that, the impact that that has, like Lisa just kind of commented on, on our ability to then later consider them in general. Just in general, like if we're making lists, I don't, I feel, I'm less nervous about it, I guess, Garrett, than you might be because, I don't like the idea, but because I know that it's just an idea, and when we get down to whether or not the community is gonna accept that idea, we're gonna have a bunch more meetings on a specific ordinance, and we're gonna get data, you know, and we're gonna, and so just broadly, while I agree, and I probably wouldn't be sad if it was gone, broadly, I'm opposed to removing things just because we don't necessarily like them right now without all the data. And, and you'll see me say the exact same thing later when we talk about the ADU issue and the reference to detached. I don't like the idea of removing things before we've talked about them in general. And so that's just my, you know, which is kind of in disagreement a little bit with the idea of taking it out, but I just feel like we have protection because we have that ordinance process to go through. Lisa?
If we're kind of staying where we stand on this, I am for keeping it in, but just so that it's not a difficult process if a determination was made knowing that there'd be a full public process to vet it out whether or not we're going to create a mandate on this. I am very supportive of the, the bonuses and the little carrots to create the affordable housing, to be able to hopefully motivate developers. So all of those tools, I'm definitely in favor of. And I would prefer that to be the process than a mandate, but again, ten years from now, we don't know what housing is gonna look like and whether or not there would be overwhelming favor to trigger something like this, so I'd prefer to leave it in for that, knowing that it's not a mandate currently.
Jeff?
Well, partly the but not limited to takes care of this. I mean, what, what it is really doing is creating a higher bar. And again, stepping back and looking at the philosophy of the comp plan, I think one of the ideas that should be guiding us is we want to come up with the flavor of how we want to see or how we're recommending that, that the city proceed with addressing the issue. And so I don't mind having a higher barrier to something that I don't believe is necessarily appropriate for Bellingham and may have, may actually decrease affordable housing, which I actually think it would in our particular market. And it's a very dangerous potential tool. And I could see this coming down as an ordinance. Somebody thinks it's a really good idea, it comes forward. You have, on one hand, you have developers saying, I don't know if it works. You have a housing economist saying, I don't think it works. And then you have other people saying, oh, we must do this. Hey, we have to do it. Housing's too expensive. It has to go through and council approves it. So I don't mind having a higher bar by not having it in there. Because if it's brought up, it's not, you can't just waive the comp plan and say, hey, it's in the comp plan, so, you know, we have to do it. It's like you have to actually step over a little bit higher bar to say, yes, this has actually been studied, it's worth looking at in Bellingham, it's gonna address our affordable, affordability problem. And I think maybe part of our role is to create the flavor of how we see the problem being addressed over the next six years until the next comp plan is done. So I'm actually in support of Garrett's proposal.
And just as an aside, do we know that this inclusionary zoning actually works? And I know it's been adopted in several places, but is there any data that, that actually shows that it, that it works? Hard data?
Well, I did include some links early on. We had some questions on this, response to comment number sixteen. Some web links that you could go to, the Municipal Research and Services Center and the Puget Sound Regional Council's website. I mean, as far as a city study, I don't know. Have, have we done a city study on inclusionary zoning?
No.
As far as you know?
No.
We would have to before an ordinance was proposed. It'd have to be an economic analysis to show the impacts and would it work? And would, would there be unintended consequences from it that weren't acceptable? So it's just a tool, and if you think that out of this list that that inclusionary zoning should have to, should have a higher bar, then take it out.
Well, I, I think it should come out, but also I'm concerned that we may be less inclined to remove something than we are to add things, which seems to be the flavor, you know, that we're going through. It's easy to add something to the, to the language, but when it comes to taking something out that's been there for a while, we're more hesitant, even though it may be a more productive move. And I think taking inclusionary housing out of there, I'd love to have the carrots and not this mandate because people are not gonna choose the other carrots if they're obligated to do something else. You're not gonna give people the opportunity to be creative, is, is the way I look at it. They're gonna be focused on that stick as opposed to the various carrots that might be offered. That's my thinking. So I would, I would definitely move that those, that be removed wherever it's referenced.
I think on this topic, there's, sorry, I think on this topic, there's mixed opinion. And to move it forward, I think I would recommend that a motion be made, if someone's willing to make a motion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I support it. I'll make the motion to remove the inclusionary zoning from one of the bullet points and LU ten. And add, I, I like the, adding the language of public-private partnerships for shared parking, wetland mitigation, and regional stormwater management. I think they'd be more effective tools.
I'll second.
Yeah, you, we could amend that to split that and have.
I think you should speak. We haven't really talked about that.
A finally amendment that we split those two.
Striking inclusionary zoning from LU ten.
And there was a second for that? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. The motion is to strike inclusionary zoning from LU ten. Is there any further discussion?
Is it referenced anywhere else?
It might be. I think it is referenced.
From anywhere?
I think it is referenced in the housing chapter.
Yeah, I, just as long as that is removed from wherever, not just.
Yeah, I'll second that amendment.
But I'm not sure. I would need to go through.
Well, I think if we just make the, the vote that way, then it would be anytime you come across it, it goes away.
I'd like to know where it makes that reference. Yeah. Oh, it's H seventeen. Consider developing an inclusionary zoning program as a means of increasing the city's affordable housing supply.
Well, I would support that amendment. I think you need consistency in the plan. And having it in one spot and not the other doesn't make a lot of sense.
We should vote on amendment first then.
Which policy?
H seventeen, page six of the housing chapter.
And the other one's in the land use chapter?
Yes.
LU ten and H seventeen. On page six of the housing chapter, there's a call-out box with the definition of inclusionary zoning. So if you're taking out the policy, you might as well also take out the definition.
I agree. So that, well, amend the original motion to.
Let's, let's address this separately. Unless, unless you'd rather, I guess, I guess I shouldn't tell you what to do. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't see any, I think they should be, both be struck if.
Or it should be struck anywhere.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a policy guidance, is what it is, so. Yeah, it's a pol, it's a, it's a policy guidance, is what it is, so. H 17 and LU 10. Well, there's a motion on the table, so you need to either act on that motion or Garrett, you can withdraw it and start over.
Or you can amend it.
I, I, we'll vote on it, that's.
Well, no, you made a motion that.
So though, I'll restate the motion as to strike LU 10 and H seven, H 17.
Or do, I'll second that, but then ask, do you want to make sure, if it's, if it lurks someplace else, do you want that gone as well? Then we should just say wherever it shows up.
Any reference to inclusionary zoning?
Any reference to it is gone.
As policy guidance to strike it.
Okay.
From both chapters.
I'll second your final motion.
Okay, so the motion, the motion's on the table is to remove reference to inclusionary zoning from the chapter, from the conference of plan entirely.
Correct.
Yes.
And there's a second for that? Okay, is there any other discussion on that? Okay, I think we should do a vote, just like we would on a normal motion, so that'll be yeas and nos. And so, um, all those in favor of, uh, the motion, and we should restate the motion, which is to remove all reference to inclusionary zoning in the conference plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? No?
No.
Tom, that was an aye? Yeah, okay, so that motion passes four to two. So that will require staff to identify other locations as well, if there are any. Um, and then I guess we'll just track those as it moves forward. Okay.
Okay, so it looks like we're moving on now to the ADU discussion.
Is the ADU the next one?
Or T 3, whichever one you want to do first.
Well, actually, quickly, Lisa asked us to separate the, the dis, the discussion of Garrett's other recommendation on LU 10. So Garrett, do you have a motion related to that?
Yeah, I make a motion to add the language and also give staff the freedom to modify that as maybe better suits the intent. It's just to establish a policy of encouraging public, public-private partnerships for shared parking, wetland mitigation, to increase, you know, affordable housing, so.
Should we just see if there's a head nod on that, because you may not need a motion if we're all.
Sure. Is there any discussion on that particular topic? There is reference in other locations, but I, I don't know if there's any harm in duping that, is, any comment for anybody? Is everybody in favor of that addition?
Yes.
Okay. Simple, thank you, Jeff. Lisa, did you catch that? Okay. So now we can move on to the, the ADU policy discussion. Um, you know, there was a number of proposals for language, I think four commissioners proposed language for a revised ADU ordinance. Would it make sense, staff, for you guys to talk a little bit about how, how you felt about all of that? I mean, as opposed to each of us kind of presenting our specific proposal and then we could respond? Or individual commissioners, would you prefer to like kind of express your ideas? I mean, there, some of them were really similar, some of them were a little bit different. Jeff, thought?
Well, I, the one thought I have is before we actually get into that, not that I want to prolong the meeting, but you know, the, one of the themes was, um, that I think was consistent enough, more than one, uh, set of comments was that we need to find out what's going on out there. And the response from staff was, well, the rental registration is going to do that. And of course, this week, the, uh, the phasing plan for the rental registration went up on the city's website and it's three years. South is first, central is next, north is the following. So the city's not going to complete their rental registration inspections until 2019. And so this, basically, the whole discussion about what's appropriate, what's not appropriate for ADUs and the parameters that gets around it, all just gets punted. And so I guess the first question I have is, you know, is there a feeling that that should be accelerated and there should be a policy statement coming from the planning commission? That that whole survey process specific to ADUs should be accelerated to get a handle on what's out there in order to come up with policy? Because of course, the ADU ordinance is coming forward and there's this disconnect in timing. So I guess the first question is, that was one of the staff responses that actually rubbed me a little bit the wrong way. But, um, you know, how does the commission feel about that? And then the next step I could see is talking about what is appropriate to put in the comp plan, given the timing issues that that presents. That's just a proposal, a discussion format.
It's a, it's a good, it's a good start. Lisa?
Well, I mean, I just want to kind of start with the original issue, which was modifying H 7, policy H 7. And we had a couple of different suggestions on how to modify that. And the revision would be permit owner occupied, attached ADUs and single family, multifamily zones and consider amending the ADU ordinance to allow owner occupied detached ADUs in certain neighborhoods. So we had modified that language to add owner occupied and to add amending the ADU ordinance to allow owner occupied. So I think, you know, we were emphasizing owner occupied and we were also emphasizing that there was another process that would need to occur to develop, um, an allowance of that.
Lisa, did we bring up some language that had to do with non-owner occupied in multifamily settings? Did that get clarified somewhere?
We did not modify that.
So is, is that permitted or not permitted now?
It's owner occupied is required.
Even in multifamily setting?
Yes.
Okay.
In, in multifamily zones, they have to be owner occupied?
Yes, yes.
Quick question.
If it's an ADU, I mean, we're talking.
You have, you have, um, number 15 is the first discussion of this in the comment tracker, just so everyone can follow me. And then you also have, um, in, in number 25 on page 11, and the language is slightly different in the staff proposal. So I was reading through that, I was a little confused. Is it like we started with number 15 and then we went to number 25?
Right.
Number 25 is what you actually are currently proposing?
Yes, I mean, sort of in chronological order. I mean, 15 was the first suggestion and then 25 was an additional suggestion. We had already added the owner occupied language and, and 25, we added the part about the ADU ordinance.
Pardon me?
I guess I just need clarification, because I thought you said that, um, owner occupied was not required in multifamily? Is that correct?
No, it is required.
Okay.
All ADUs are required to be owner occupied in the city.
So under number 25, it states in multifamily zone, owner occupied is not essential. So that is the recommendation you're making then?
I'm sorry, what did you just say?
Um, number 25, it says in multifamily zone, owner occupied is not as essential. So is that the language you're recommending or am I?
No, that's, that's the comment from, I think, um, whoever made that comment, yeah.
I'm looking at the wrong column, I apologize.
No.
I, yeah, I guess.
I'm sorry, and I just wanted to clarify, it's not the ADU itself that has to be owner occupied, is that?
One of the.
One of the units has to be owner occupied.
We've got a couple of issues here, we've got that issue, that's one issue. It's kind of a sidebar issue, but it's a, I think, an important issue that Garrett's raised throughout the process. We've got the issue of what we want to say in our policy and Jeff struck on that. I think everybody who made a comment on this, if I recollect, commented on the, the kind of data element. It's a really good point, we, we're in the process of reviewing an ADU ordinance right now. It would really be disappointing to just punt that for three years while we wait for rental registration to be completed, I think. Is there a way that we can capture that concern about data without, um, just pushing the whole process off down the road for some time? Lisa? And then Jeff, sorry.
I also need clarification because of, um, meetings that I've had with, um, planning early on, um, last summer. I'm pretty sure the conversation stated that the, uh, inspections were not necessarily going to be geared towards identifying, um, non-permitted ADUs. And that the only way one would come forward would be if there was a concern about health and safety. So if you have So I'm not comfortable that the inspection program is actually going to be a good tool for identifying how many ADUs we have out there, whether they're attached or detached. So when we're saying in some conversations that, um, that inspection program over the next three years is going to be able to capture that. Other conversations I've had have stated that would not be the case at all unless there was a health and safety concern. But there was no mechanism whatsoever for, um, the inspector to say, hey, there's a basement apartment here. It may look great and it may look like it's, you know, up to code. And if so, that, there's not going to be a trigger to have that go on, something to be looked into. Is that correct?
It is and the rental registration program is, is, uh, will be inspecting people who have registered their multifam, or their rental units. So if I have a, if I have an ADU in my house and I don't register it, there's no reason that the city will know it's there. There's no mechanism for us to go in and inspect.
That would be owner occupied, but even if you had a situation where somebody chopped, like next door to me, a house, you know, there's a, an apartment in the basement and it's not owner occupied, they rent out both sides and it's, there's not a permit for it. So in an inspection situation, from what I understand, the inspector would not necessarily be reporting that apartment, providing that it meets the health and safety standards that they're looking at, even though the wiring could have been done and it's, you know, it's closed up, but they never had the proper permits or inspection for that process. So unless it's a visible health and safety concern, it is not going to be triggered forward even though it could be registered. I mean, I'm assuming those conversations I had would still stand. So I want to caution the assumption that this rental inspection program is actually going to capture the true representative, you know, how many ADUs we have out there. Because it won't. So as we talk about that going forward, you know, just keep that in mind, that this is not going to be a way for us to know what we have out there at all.
Jeff?
So I, I should call attention to my 62, number 62. We're not talking about it in detail right now, but the point is, is that I drafted that, taking a lot of these things into consideration. What I, my comment about going rogue is basically, I see the ADU ordinance is, is churning through right now, but, um, I think it's probably worse to have an ADU ordinance that, um, is ahead of its time, that goes down in flames than it is to go through a process to actually figure out what's going on. And so my thought was, if this is contingent on actually doing a specific study of ADUs, you know, there are resources, sources out there, there are people that know where the ADUs are, the city could actually do a specific study, dedicate the money to it, put it in the work plan. This is a, this is a new thing, this is actually expressing a priority for this. You know, here's a priority, do the ADU study, figure out what's out there, figure out what the saturation level is in different neighborhoods, you know, get that data. Then do the ADU ordinance and go through the list, you know, some of the considerations I have with neighborhood density, lot size and all these other things. Then come up with a rational plan for what the ADU is and have it supported. It seems to me that that has a chance of success and would actually achieve our objectives. It seems to me that trying to get very specific about an ADU and hear about what's permitted, what's not, have a blanket statement in there is a recipe for disaster. And so, um, I guess I would support, and I know it's not the planning department's work plan right now, but trying to handle this in a sequential manner over the next couple of years, get it together and go forward and get some more consensus about what actually makes sense, rather than trying to have a battle right now, um, and ramming something through. And so that's, that's why I wrote 62 the way it is, so I just want to explain that.
Tom, yeah?
So the city should hire Jim Rockford to go around and find all these places, is that what you're saying?
Your garbage and recycling drivers know where every single one of those are.
Garrett?
Well, I, I, I agree with Jeff. I, I think to be responsible to the public, I think 90% of the public comment that we've received is, how can we write an ordinance when we don't know what we have? And that's going to be a major roadblock as we go through to try to, to try to write an ordinance. I, I think we need to update the ADU ordinance. We, we're going to have to identify and address the issue of the, the existing inventory and what's out there, I just don't see any way around it. And it could be done through a series of workshops, neighborhood meetings. It may be, it doesn't, it may not have to be a formal, you know, analysis, but just a general analysis. You know, you could have a meeting in the York neighborhood, South neighborhood, and you could have those representatives come and talk about how many units they feel there is, what's appropriate for that neighborhood? And then compile that into an approximate inventory of ADUs. And so we know what we're dealing with. I, I mean, in, in my suggestions for that H 7, I said evaluate existing ADU inventory, identify opportunities for attached and detached and approve permitting enforcement. So just, you know, I, I think it's just from the policy, from an aspirational position, we should be setting the direction of, we know the ADU ordinance is, is going to be underway. What do we really want to accomplish with that? What do we need to accomplish with that in order to have a successful rewrite and update of that ordinance? And I think without the inventory, we're, we're not going to get anywhere. I, I really, I really believe that. So I think it should be in the comp plan that we identify or evaluate what's out there.
Um, I think that data will, there's a lot of emotion involved in this issue and there's maybe a lot of, um, people tend to, I, this is a terrible way to say this, people tend to exaggerate things when they're emotional about them on both sides of the issue. And we can't get anywhere with that tone and that lack of information. And I agree, you know, like just from a pure perspective of having some data, we'll be able to refute comments that might come up that are misleading or we'll be able to ameliorate concerns that might be unfounded on either side of it. So I, I also agree, I didn't propose language, but I agree with the suggestion from other commissioners that an inventory is necessary and data is necessary, um, to really fully understand this. I, I actually like what you suggested in policy, what Garrett suggested in policy language. The only reason is because I really like what you wrote too, Jeff, but I feel like a lot of the, the, that took it to the point where we'd be working on the ordinance. You know, like, we, we're going to be looking at, the rule revision process should consider all these things. But do we need to state all that in the policy or should the policy just say, evaluate the inventory, identify opportunities and improve and permitting? I mean, I don't know, I just felt like it was more, more clear.
Just in case you think I'm a hypocrite, because I'm always like, oh, this is a big policy document, we don't need to get into the weeds. The reason I got into the weeds on that one was actually to assure people that these things would be taken under consideration. And that it wasn't just a way of ramming something through, um, by, by trying to neuter it a little bit and, and package it in a pretty way. It was actually saying, these are actually concerns as part of the planning process and these are some of the things that we want looked at as this moves forward so that we're proceeding in a rational. That said, I'm fine if it goes away.
But, but you, you're, you're really, your intent is to suggest that we get some sort of inventory? And I like the idea that you present, just personally, of trying to make that its own focus, because I think like Lisa just pointed out very clearly, the rental reg isn't going to capture it, the people cheating are probably still cheating and not coming forward and registering. So, um, I might, I, I, well, I don't usually make motions, but I would recommend, um, I know, and we can discuss afterwards, Jeff, do you have?
Can we get a staff response?
Yeah, any thoughts on this? Sorry.
Well, I did, if you're, if you're, it sounds like you're kind of heading with Garrett's suggestion of, of comment number 57. And I just wonder on the bullet point where you say, identify opportunity areas for attached and detached ADUs, why are you calling out attached? Because those are already allowed.
Yeah, it could, I mean, they are allowed, so I guess the intent was, I was just to, to say, we're going to look at areas that are appropriate.
Appropriate might be a better word.
Yeah. You know? But, but it, I, I hear what you're saying, it doesn't necessarily have to single out attached, because, you know, they are, they are, you know, required, or they are permissible right now, so. You could just say, identify opportunity areas for detached ADUs. Because that would be the, you know, substantive change in the ordinance if it's written that way.
Well, the parameters might be different for multifamily versus single family, for attached versus detached, there's a lot of variables there.
Yeah, that's, I think I was just trying to keep it open, saying, what is the right, what is the right placement for an attached ADU?
That's the big, that's a big discussion topic.
For a detached, is there a proper place for a detached? If there is, what are the parameters? And that's why I figured if we leave it open, but we're, I, we're saying we're going to identify the opportunities, the hope is that, you know, a responsible expansion. the hope is that, you know, a responsible expansion of the ADU, you know, ADU implementation could happen, but it has to be done appropriately and in the right areas.
These, these bullets kind of capture all the key issues that people have raised, in a sense, enforcement, permitting, attached and detached, where do they go? Those are like the big, how many do we have? That, I feel like you've tried to capture all of those key issues. I, I like Jeff's question to staff, though, you know, there was a ton of public comment on this topic, and everybody had this concern about data. Has staff gone back internally and had any discussions about this? Like, how do we tackle this? I don't think the rental reg is going to do it. I agree with Lisa and Jeff, and I, I get the impression that we've gotten that feedback really from you guys. So has that discussion gone on at all internally?
Well, we had a very, a pretty brief amount of time, I mean, to sort of.
But they've been talking about this since, I mean, we've been getting comments on ADU data since like the very beginning, so.
We have, but the inventory part of it, I mean, I think our message has stayed the same, and, and I did have a few minutes to sit down with Rick and Greg, and this is, the response that you see is the city's stance. I mean, it would be very difficult to ascertain through a separate process at this time an exact count of ADUs.
Well, but Lisa, I mean, I guess, what, what do you want us to do? You know, we're, we're representing, the, the, the public has said clearly for almost a year now that nothing should happen until an inventory is done, and we're, we're here saying, you know, I agree. So where do you, where do you send, spend staff resources? I mean, we've had a year to talk about this, and.
And it's okay if the response, I guess, is, we don't think you need to do it, but is that kind of the idea? I mean, is that the direction from the director? Is, this isn't something we can do effectively?
You asked for our response, so this is our response, and, and we're happy to oblige with your, your recommendation as you see fit. I mean, we may not be able to do what you're suggesting, but you're welcome to put it in there.
If we, Jeff?
Well, I think it's important to put it in there specifically with the point of prioritizing the work plan and the funding for these things to happen. Because, you know, at one point you have staff looking at it as, oh, there's this whole other project, you know, it's not in our work plan, it's not in our resources, and the others have it in the plan, and it goes to council and say, this is important. And so the council's in a position to fund it and make it happen and make sure it's in the, in the plan. So I, I would very strongly advocate for having it in the plan specifically as a, as an objective identified by the planning commission and the public, and to see where it goes.
And do you think that the way that Garrett has structured this takes us there?
It could be stronger, you know, it could actually, you know, identify it in the first year or two of the plan, or if, you know, there, there could be something that's a little bit stronger about when it happens and how it happens and how, how much of a priority it is, but.
I, I guess, what, when I was thinking evaluate existing ADU inventory as a policy position, is not to say that it has to be done down to the scientific detail of saying, this is how many are in each neighborhood, but some consideration given saying, generally, we feel like in the York neighborhood, there's five permitted ADUs, that's easy, we know how many permitted there are, and there is generally twenty to thirty illegal ADUs. Sure, ju, okay, but whatever it is, right? Because just generally speaking, i- in this neighborhood, there's a high concentration of illegal units, and this is information that's gathered from the neighborhood groups through, you know, empirical evidence, all these things combined and have a general inventory. Then that could be debated. People could say, well, I don't think those numbers are accurate, but at least we're presenting something, and we've had a year to do it, and we haven't done anything. But I, I don't think we want to pigeonhole ourselves into having to come to a level of specificity that makes it impossible, because we still want to rewrite the ordinance, I think, and come up with something meaningful.
I'm just sort of curious from staff, once we have all this data, as correct as it may be or not, what do we do with all the illegal ones? I'm just sort of playing ahead and thinking, what's the next step after we know all this and so on and so forth? I mean, what do we do?
So people will be given the opportunity to either make them legal, if they can, or extinguish the use, that's, those are the options.
And the standards for that, the details for that would be in the, in the ordinance. I, I'm gonna, I'd like to make a motion, and we can have further discussion, and I'm going to amend your language slightly in this. So I've written it down, but if anyone needs clarification, I can repeat it. I'd like to make a motion that we revise policy H-seven to state, update the city's ADU ordinance with priorities on evaluating existing ADU inventory, identifying appropriate areas for attached and detached ADUs, improving permitting enforcement, and I'd like to add one more, ensuring owner occupancy is a requirement in single-family zones.
I'm good with all that.
And I think all those, and just, well, I guess that's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. I'd like to just explain very briefly, because I don't want to take up too much time. I, I want to change the word "to" to "with priorities on" because the AD ordinance is bigger than those few things. And when we say update the ordinance "to," you limit yourself to those things. If you say with priorities on, you're acknowledging that those are the four focus issues, other things might come up. And then appropriate versus opportunity areas is just maybe more clear, and I think that we need to have a clear statement. The one thing that's missing that everyone's brought up and over and over and over again in here is the owner occupancy issue, so I think we need to have a clear statement about that. But I would, I would ask that it be in single-family zones only because I think, as Garrett stated, if you require an owner occupancy in a multifamily zone, you're actually down zoning, you know, because you can build a duplex and, and have two, you know, you could do, you don't have to have, it's a multifamily zone, doesn't matter. So anyway, that's, that's why I, I made those recommended language changes. Any discussion? Let, let's let Tom.
A little, a little clarification, that's ensure with an E?
Yes, wait. I don't know.
You could just say require, you could just say, you know, require owner occupancy in single-family neighborhoods, it's just a requirement.
Requiring, we're requiring owner occupancy in single-family zones?
I just have one comment on that. We do have multifamily zones that are developed straight out with single-family subdivisions. So you're saying that those areas would not be required to be owner occupied, even though the, the main use in that whole area would be single-family?
That's a good point. I, maybe, I would, I would say right now, I'm comfortable saying in the single-family zone, we know, we, we know we want owner occupancy. I'm not comfortable deciding personally how I feel about the multifamily zones. You bring up a really good point that makes me think maybe slightly differently about it, but I feel like that's something that we could work through as a part of an ordinance. And if it turns out that they need to be owner occupied in multifamily zones too, we could incorporate that into the, the body of the ordinance. But I would say that if there's commissioners, I, I want to move forward with some inventory policy, and if there's commissioners who are uncomfortable without a reference to multifamily, I would concede that. I just, I don't know if it's necessary at this stage.
I like, I like the way.
I like it this way.
Yeah, absolutely. That's good.
And.
Let's vote on it.
Okay. Is there, well, is there any other discussion?
I think we're just heading on.
Lisa?
No, I'm really happy with the change, because we do need to have a focus on inventory, and I like your addition with the single-family zoning, so.
Just make that more clear.
And it achieves my request, which was to just eliminate the policy, because I was never happy with the, the last few words, you know, in certain neighborhoods. I think that just caused a lot of concern for people who spoke.
And I think that gives us the opportunity, right, as part of the ordinance, to talk about where they're appropriate. So, yeah, I agree. Okay, I think we have.
Can I just?
Yeah.
Ask, ask for one clarification, because you say evaluate existing ADU inventory, that can be, also be looked at, the city's inventory of what we have permitted in each neighborhood. I think you're looking at how many, what's the total number we have out there that are legal or illegal?
How would we clarify that, evaluating existing?
Because right now, the way I read it, when I first read it, was, I was thinking of the city's inventory that we have, because we monitor how many we have in each neighborhood.
How about evaluating existing permitted and unpermitted ADU?
Just assess all ADUs, because you've got, you've got permitted, you've got potentially legal but non-conforming, you've got ones that do not have any hope of being permitted because they are outright zoning violations and doesn't really matter. So you've got a lot of different things going on. I think what would really help is to get an idea of the scope of what's going on, to the extent you can, understanding it's not down to the last individual unit, but, you know, I would see potentially trying to categorize some of the ADUs into those, those categories to get a sense of what you'll end up with eventually, and, and the form that they're taking, you know, are, are some of them carriage houses, you know, is it proportion between carriage houses and, and attached and converted garages? I mean, it's just, this is common sense, but basically, you know, really getting a, a scope on what's going on in the neighborhoods for everything.
If we.
So I think, I mean, that's, I don't think we need to say that.
No, but if we say.
All ADUs.
How do we say it? Evaluating all ADU inventory? It's, I don't want it to be misinterpreted. I mean, is, is it enough that our discussion delivers that intention, Lisa?
How about inventory, all, I don't want to, complied and non-complied ADUs, so basically, or conforming, non-conforming, or?
All de facto ADUs.
Maybe like just inventory ADUs, you know, within the city. I mean, because there's also non-conforming detached ADUs that are existing out there right now, where they're, they've had someone living in there, you know, say in the nineteen forties, nineteen fifties, and they can prove that it's always been used as an ADU, so it's basically legal, non-conforming is what it is. And those are out there too, and they may not be registered under the ADU inventory that the city has. So, yeah, I said then just evaluate existing, you know, ADUs.
Okay.
Or you could say evaluate and inventory existing ADUs, because I think we're talking about doing some sort of inventory, some sort of. So evaluate and inventory all ADUs.
Yeah, just use AD, inventory as a verb, we're going to inventory them.
Okay, so I'm going to restate this before we do, it sounds like there's a lot of agreement, but I think we should just do, do this formally, because I made a motion and because there's been some language that's been restated, just so it's clear. So I'm going to restate this, and anyone who thinks that I stated this wrong, please let me know, and then we'll have a vote. So we would, the motion is to amend policy H-seven to state, update the city's AD ordinance with priorities on evaluating and inventorying all ADUs, identifying appropriate areas for attached and detached ADUs, improving permitting enforcement, requiring owner occupancy in single-family zones. Is that accurate? Okay, so let's have a vote unless there's further discussion. All those in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. No, thank you. Jeff?
I would like to thank everybody, including the staff, on that. I mean, that was one of the most rewarding conversations I think I've had for a long time, and we actually ground through something, resolved it, and, and it worked really well. I really, that was a good job for all of us.
Yeah, and I, and I would say, a little back patting's never bad, I would say that I appreciate, this is an issue I wanted to talk about, and I appreciate as the comments rolled in on Monday and Tuesday, that everybody had obviously thought about this language, and it was interesting to see different, you know, ideas presented. We all had the same ideas presented in different ways, and so I'm glad that we were able to, and kudos to you, Garrett, for coming up with something that was clear, because I think it captured all of the issues that everybody raised. So, okay, so we, that was the biggest one, we finished it, it's ten o'clock. We have to talk about the transportation policy and a few little things that we, next week, that we, that we asked about, that we asked to be changed or get more feedback on, I think, and then I think there's just a few minor issues at the end, would, that people raised. Would it make sense to adjourn on that high note and come back? And I think, I, I feel like we can get through the few remaining items in a fairly timely fashion next week and move to, to a recommendation. Does anybody else feel differently? Because I would continue, but it is ten, and it's been a long night, and we've had them here, and.
I know, we're going to see pumpkins out there.
Staff, how do you feel about that? Good?
Yep.
Okay, thank you for your patience.
I would like to say something.
Yeah, we're not completely done, but we can, we'll, we'll, oh, go ahead, sorry.
That, that next time, that I do want to re-bring up the Mount Baker Theater's inclusion on the land use, or no, the, the.
Capital facility.
Capital facility, sorry, and that is under thirty-five on our tracker, and backing up to also on thirty. So I'm, I'm just going to say, I'm going to bring that up next week, and I'm happy to just let that sit.
Well, and, and I think that that should be a good, if there's any homework at all for us, is to go through your tracker and see which ones you felt like we missed, and without a doubt, Phyllis, we'll, if there's things that you feel like we didn't address, we'll, we'll work through them next week, because I'm sure everybody has one or two.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we'll, we'll end the work session for tonight.
Yeah, I just, I think that's really important, so if there are comments in here that we haven't identified for staff changes that you really want to talk about, make note of those, and if you can, give us a heads up, because, you know, we, there are ninety-some of these things, and we're obviously not going to be able to talk about them all, so. Identify the priorities, the ones you'd really like to talk about, so we can do that kind of in an efficient manner at the next meeting.
Yeah, and that.
We'd appreciate that.
And it was helpful, thank you guys for taking all that stuff we gave you early in this week and getting it all in here for us to review. I think that helped a lot. So with that, we don't really have any old or new business, except, Greg, do you want to talk about the May nineteenth? It looks like we're going to finish on the twenty-first, and then we would have till the nineteenth, till our next meeting?
Yeah, the next meeting would be May nineteenth, and we'll have two items on the agenda. One will be the proposal by Lydia Place to amend the neighborhood plan and the zoning rules for their facility on Gladstone Street, so that they can expand and add more transitional housing. And then Western has proposed an amendment to their institutional master plan. Their master plan has areas divided into land use areas like our zoning, and they want to change one of the boundaries at the interior of the campus so that they can build a new dorm, basically. That's the proposed amendment, and that is a quasi-judicial action, so I think you all got note today. Appearance of fairness and conflict of interest rules will apply. You can't talk about this with people outside of the hearing. All of the information and discussion has to occur at the hearing.
Thank you, and that's not the case for the Lydia?
No, that's not the case for Lydia Place.
I just wanted to clarify.
Lydia Place is legislated.
It's legislated, because it's a rezone.
So Greg, does that translate into no meeting on the fifth?
Assuming that you finish next week, yes.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, well, with that, I think we'll adjourn, and again, yeah, thank everybody for this long meeting, and we made a lot of progress.